Hey, thank you, counsel. It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, January 28th, 2025, and I'll call this meeting of the Berry City Council. Oh, don't make me use this. It's been so long. Thank you. I'll call this meeting of the Berry City Council, regular meeting of the Berry City Council to order. Counsel, before we begin, folks, a little quieter in back? Thanks so much. I appreciate you. Counsel, before we get going, you've probably noticed the odor. We had some epoxy flooring done in the basement of City Hall. It's quite pungent. So Nicholas and I spoke about this earlier today. Well, late afternoon, I should say. And so I thought the best thing to do would be to call the meeting to order. People have different tolerance levels, you know, to odors and to smells like that. So if anyone in the council would like to recess the meeting at some point, happy to do that. We can recess. We can come back tomorrow, Thursday, and finish things up. It's totally up to all of you. So, you know, please, if it does bother you, you can either, you know, exit and zoom in if you'd like to do that, or you could suggest a recess. I'm happy to do either. My point is just don't be a hero. If it bugs you, it's okay. So with that, counsel, any adjustments to the agenda or Mr. Manager?
None from me, Mayor.
Okay, counsel, I had one. I think I sent it via email to all of you. Wanted an executive session regarding legal and personnel. So that will dovetail along with the manager's request for an executive session. Under, anything else, counsel? Under adjustments to the agenda? Okay, thank you. Under Visitors and Communications, is there anyone wishing to address the council regarding an item that is not on the agenda? Representative Booton?
Actually, Chair.
And a guest.
Chair Booton and Superintendent. Yes, so we do have some handouts.
Excellent.
To tell you about our budget.
Thanks, sir.
I didn't even see you when I walked in.
I said hi, Sonya.
I'm sorry.
How are you guys doing this evening?
Amazing.
Doing well.
So we wanted to come here and let you know that we passed our budget. Let me rephrase that. We voted on the school board to pass our budget.
To present a budget?
To present, yes. Hopefully, it passes in March. I'll let you take it from here and then I'll...
Okay. You guys like, why don't you start?
Okay, that's fine. So I want to just give a little explanation of the process. We had started off with the budget at seven, somewhere around 7%, somewhere around there. And there was some conversation about 4%. And we were able to strike a compromise and we got down to 4.95%, which does not negatively impact the children of Berry City while also curtailing some of the expenses. The really awesome thing for Berry City is that currently with the yield being 8,500, that's the last information that we have, it's going to be a 0% increase in the education side. And technically, it's actually a .003% decrease. I think that the budget is reasonable and we're certainly excited to present it to the city of Berry on March 4th at the Berry Auditorium. And I'll let Joanne, she can certainly answer any questions if you guys have any.
I'm hoping to reach out to the community beginning next week, actually. I have a coffee and conversation with the community in the Aldrich Library. So we'll be getting that information out on social media. I'm going to bring a little coffee with me. So anyone who wants to have a budget conversation, please join us. We will be choosing some other locations. Also, on Wednesday, February 12th, which is a regularly scheduled board meeting, we will have an informational meeting before the board goes into their regular agenda. And then, as you know, we have our annual meeting scheduled for Monday, the 3rd of March. I'm happy to answer any questions. As Michael said, I think the administration and the board did a good job of balancing the needs of the taxpayers and the needs of our students. You've heard the governor talk a lot about education spending and I think we have made some responsible decisions related to our class sizes as well as keeping intact the important programs that we need for the students to be successful.
And I'll follow up on the governor. We had his budget addressed today, which was amazing and I highly recommend folks listen to it. Last year, the legislature did commission a study, which was the Picas Report, and they actually made suggestions about funding for children and using weighted numbers. I think it was somewhere around 13,000, was that? I keep using a 13,000, but we're actually well underneath that at $11,476. You know, it's something that I think we do a pretty good job here in Berry City.
Questions?
I have no questions.
So how many votes? How many votes?
How many votes do we need?
How many votes to present the budget?
It was a split.
No, I said, how many votes? How many votes did you have to take before you could present a budget?
Oh, okay. So we did have to do two. We, the original motion...
How many did you do last year?
Okay.
Listen, my point is, Chair and Superintendent, what a huge improvement. You know, believe me, I watched the process. And congratulations, Counsel Spalding, because I think you had something to do with this as well. You know, you watch the process. Not everyone gets what they want. Some people suggested perhaps a lower amount. The superintendent and administration didn't feel that that was in the best interest of educating our kids and the best interest, long term, of the taxpayers. So believe me, even though it's been 30 years since I've sat on a school board, I still pay attention and I watch your meetings. And it was an incredible improvement. My hope going forward is that folks can put the personalities aside. I understand that it's tough when you don't get what you want. I'm guilty of that one at times. But now you got to pass a budget. We've got to pass a budget as a city on the first try and move forward and not let revote after revote after revote just frankly suck the air out of the room. So I'm hopeful for that and I'm hopeful that you do a fairly comprehensive budget presentation and that you show that a few times so people can understand. And I'd love a budget presentation that actually takes, I know you'd have to get permission, but actually takes you into the schools to see some of the things that we're doing with kids and talk to the kids about how they feel about their education as well.
That's a great idea.
So, good job with you as well, Counsel Spalding. Thank you very much. Good job to two of you.
Thank you.
I was impressed.
We're pretty excited about this budget. Like I said, I think it really did strike a balance and nobody got everything that they wanted. But the most important thing is that the children are receiving what they need for a good education. And I know that Joanne can do it. I have full confidence.
Absolutely. As Bill Belichick would say back in the day, "We're on to March."
We're going to leave these here in case anybody wants to take them.
Great. Thank you very much. Pleasure having you. Mr. Anthony, how are you, sir?
Wonderful.
Great to see you.
I'm good. As you folks know, I think from prior visits, Danielle and I are the sort of anchor team for the River Access Task Force created by the community several years ago. I alas didn't make the council packet, but I asked the administrative assistant to make sure you each had a copy of the flyer. This is an integral part of our preparation for a report to the council on issues like, how are we going to promote access? What does access mean? Where will the points of access be along the river? Or where would we think they will be successful? What kinds of activities do we expect would happen at those access points? What's the design to make sure that those access points are adequately accessible to all sorts of members of our community? So just taking this opportunity to get on the air, I'll put postings around physically and on social media. But with that, let me turn it over to our person who's much better at content than I am.
So this is, like Peter said, it's part of the Berry River Access Master Plan. So you might remember, we came to council to let you know we're doing an application with the Friends of the Nuski River to receive grant funding and then we got approved for that grant funding for over $100,000 to work on a scoping study to identify access points and then also to design a plan for being able to have access from Rotary Park that would be more accessible to folks who have more challenges and limitations with movement. So as part of this, so this is just a small part of what's going on with this plan. You hear more about it as things happen is that D and K, so DeBoy and King, is the consultant that the Friends of the Nuski hired to help us with the scoping plan. And so they're working on this, we're calling it Story Circles, River Stories. And we're asking basically anybody in the community who's interested in sharing any stories they have about the river to come to the Aldrich Library. It's going to be February 11th, which is, it's during a council meeting, but it was the day that worked. So apologies for that.
Tuesday, yeah.
Yep, so it's a Tuesday. So February 11th, Tuesday, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the library. Pizza will be provided. And just, it's, you don't have to talk. You can just come to listen, but we hope people will bring stories. We'd love to hear historic stories, people lived here forever, and some neat stories that they can tell us. There was a gentleman one day when I was just walking the dog down the road who stopped me and we were chatting. And he told me about how one of his parents would tie him to a tree with a rope and he would play right by the river. You know, it was just long enough so he wouldn't fall in. And I thought, wow, isn't that an interesting story? So I would just love to hear more stories like that. We've received pictures of the old log runs that used to go down the Stevens Branch, which are just amazing to see. So we really want to hear everybody's stories. You know, good, happy stories, sad stories, whatever it happens to be. So again, February 11th, 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Aldrich Library, free pizza. It'll be in the Milne Room, which is downstairs.
If you can, RSVP, but not necessary for sure. Just so we get a head count and we make sure we have plenty of pizza.
Yep, and we'll be sharing it on Front Porch Forum. And we also have a link for folks, if they can't attend the event, that they can still go online and share their story.
And give us a little narrative of what I did when I was 11 years old and scared my parents to death, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions? Anything else you want to promote, as long as you're here, the work you're doing? You're doing great work. We appreciate you. Okay, is there anyone else under Visitors and Communications? Okay, seeing none, counsel, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We'll be, oh, no, oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
This is very quick.
Oh, name for the record.
Oh, my name?
I know you.
My name is Beth Mueller. Longtime resident in Berry. My husband and I own a downtown business. So we're, you know, we're very invested in Berry. And I just would like to say thank you for what you did a week and a half or so ago with standing up the shelter at the auditorium during the Arctic blast and sheltering folks who were in-house. We really, both my husband and I really appreciated that. So thank you for your great work.
Thank you, Beth. But for the record, that was mostly Tess Taylor, who takes that work very seriously. And there were others as well. You want to name them now?
Yeah, I mean, it was Tess's brainchild. And then we had Fire Chief Cushman, Deputy Fire Chief Alsworth, who made the connections with the state, with VEM, to deploy some resources. And we had our facilities director, Tom Baker, who made sure the facility was ready to go and accessible and available. And then our police department, which was making routine checks up there to make sure everybody was in good shape. And so, yeah, really, a team effort. I think the state, you know, it was really a four-pronged approach that made it successful, which was the state, the city, the Red Cross, and volunteers. And if any one of those had failed, it wouldn't have worked. So it was everybody together that made it happen.
Yeah, no, it was fantastic. So thank you.
Well, thanks for noticing, Beth. It was a proud moment. Anyone else under Visitors and Communications? Okay, counsel, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We'll be approving the minutes of the meeting of 1:14:25. Do you have any, I didn't see any licenses in the packet. Okay, there are no licenses. We'll be appointing the manager as the ethics liaison. That is a new position that we need to populate. And I believe the manager also included a reminder to everyone that you do need to complete your ethics training. I have completed mine. You put the, I've been putting, I just put the manager in because he was a repository for the information. So when you complete your ethics training, if you could just put the manager's name in, he'll get an email, as will you. Yes?
I'd like to recommend that we nominate the HR director to be the ethics liaison just because the city manager has so much to do.
I think it can be the manager. I think when you, as I read the regulations, it can be the manager, but he can also delegate. So at least is consistency, but I'm open either way. Yes?
In the packet, under Agenda Item 4C, it says, "Examples of positions that have been appointed to the liaison role by municipalities include, but are not limited to, town manager, assistant town manager, HR director, town administrator, city attorney, administrative assistant, select board member, and town clerk treasurer." So I would second the HR director since we have one. And I feel like if someone has an ethics complaint, I would hope that the HR director would be the person that they would go to anyway.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Any objection?
No, I mean, I noted in my memo that I believe that after implementation, that somebody else would be better suited. So that's fine with me.
Okay, so we'll do that. We will just make sure we get it on the agenda, on the consent agenda for ratification. So we will go ahead and change that to appoint the human resources director.
Administrator.
Administrator. Okay, so human resources administrator. If that position is vacant, would we want to recognize that at that point it would default to the manager until such time as the position is filled? Too confusing for you?
Well, in my estimation, a municipality of this size should have an HR administrator at all times. So I'm not sure we should let that go empty.
I hope that we would.
We had a vacancy for about, we did have a vacancy when there was just a transition, but yeah.
Right, right, right.
It was a quick transition, but by law, you're supposed to have someone appointed all the time.
Well, I would assume that when the HR administrator is, if there's someone who is absent, that it defaults to someone else, like the city manager. I'm sure that there's some sort of...
Yeah, I'm not going to take up five more minutes with this discussion. All those in favor of the, okay, so we're good with the human resources administrator. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor of the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. And thank you for your motion, Counsel Deering. Thank you for your second, Counsel Sean Bell.
Okay.
Okay. So counsel, we're at Item 4A on the agenda. This is to approve the city warrants. We'll be ratifying the week of 1:15:25 and 1:22:25, and we'll be approving the week of 1:29:25. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Counsel Stockwell, seconded by Counsel Sean Bell. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much.
I will abstain.
Your abstention is noted. Ms. City Clerk?
All right, just a few brief things I need to mention. Last night, we did swear in the new, the 15 new elected justices of the peace. I wish them well and I'm looking forward to working side by side with them through their terms. Secondly, the clerk's office would like to remind the community that it is time to register or relicence your canines with our office. And please be sure you have updated rabies information with you when you do that. Thirdly, we'd like to ease everyone's mind in regards to the third quarter tax payment. We have read our reports and we are confident that the remainder of the education tax will be pulled at the same time that the third quarter tax payment will be pulled. Many people did show concern that it would be left remaining, hanging on a thread as due. But it all will be extracted at the same time as your third quarter payment. If you have any additional questions, please reach out. And we are confident that is through the direct debit withdrawals as well as through the escrow withdrawals. And that is it.
That is it. Thank you very much. Any questions, folks? Seeing none, we'll move on to, I don't believe we have anything under liquor or cannabis. Mr. Manager, it's all yours.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I would encourage residents to fill out the budget survey. It is found on our website scroll, so it's right front and center when you go to berrycity.org. There are hard copies available both at my office here in City Hall and at the circulation desk at Aldrich Library. And all responses are due by 4:00 PM on Friday, February 7th. And when I checked at 10:00 AM this morning, there were 182 responses. So really encourage folks to get on there. It doesn't take too long and will help inform the difficult decisions we have ahead in this budget. I was going to mention that we had the flood repairs going on at City Hall, but you can smell that. So we should, the good news there is that we should have the engineer's office back online early next month, which will be nice. Brian and his team have been displaced since July 10th of 2023. And then I see Tess has logged on and I was going to mention, I'm glad Beth was very kind to be here to mention it, but I was going to share with the council about the overnight warming shelter. Tess, I shared about, you know, our four partners, state, the state, the volunteers, the city, and the Red Cross. And I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to add, but we did share sort of the four pillars that made it successful. I don't know if there's anything else you'd care to share with the council.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess just our volunteers that stepped up from the churches were instrumental. I mean, I don't think we could have done it without them because we really needed people to be there, people who had had some experience with being with homeless people and also doing the night work. So I'm just so grateful to them and the state for pulling this together. And Joe and just, it just was this incredible effort and it was so fast. And, but we took care of some people who otherwise wouldn't have been taken care of. Thank you.
Thanks, Tess. And then my final update for the council is, I feared some concern, and we share it, about the federal spending freeze. So we are, we're still reviewing the orders that have been issued by President Trump and his appointees to try to gauge the impact of the federal spending freeze on Berry City. What we know so far, and this is all subject to change, so I'll make sure to keep the council and the public updated, but all of our 2023 flood projects have been obligated and that's $951,000. So those should be safe based on what we have heard so far. There's been, the city, the FEMA share of 2024 flood projects has not been obligated. And that's about $600,000. So we're concerned, obviously, about that. And then from the other area of federal funding that we receive is in the police department through grants. The police department received two notices from the Department of Homeland Security today to place grants on pause. And that's $128,000 for a radio upgrade, which is very concerning, and $32,245 for a stop grant that pays for a domestic violence interventionist at the state's attorney's office. That person would be, would have to be laid off if this grant is indeed paused. So that's obviously concerning. We have some Department of Justice grants. They're called JAG grants. We're less certain about that. The police department hasn't received any notices about those. We have about $14,500 that we would receive for those, which pay for things like police equipment. And so we would obviously feel the pain if those were all sworn pause. I haven't, you know, I received text, a text update that it sounds like a judge has blocked the President Trump's spending pause until Monday. I'm sure there's going to be litigation, so we don't know what the end of this will be. But I just want to let folks know that it is significant and meaningful and problematic if we do lose this federal funding. So we share the concerns that, you know, people raised to us and we've obviously been very concerned with it as well.
Any questions? Yes.
The Peter Welch money for disaster relief, though, is secure.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Those funds are, you're speaking specifically about the $68 million. Yeah, those are obligated funds. So those funds are fine.
And if I could just add as well that we've asked VEM specifically about buyouts and those are still, they're operating as if those are also still secure at this point. Those aren't grants to the city. But we're also obviously still concerned about those moving through. And VEM says that they are, they believe they're still in effect. They're operating as if they are. They haven't heard anything different, so.
So, any other questions, counsel? I guess all we can do is have you, you know, have you keep us informed. I mean, we saw this, not this likely wouldn't, beneficial ownership reporting. I don't know if any of you saw anything about that on social media. It's basically, you have to report beneficial ownership of corporations. That act was challenged. It was ruled unconstitutional. Then a district court stayed the act. Then they took it away. Then they stayed it. So now it's, my point is that, for example, the domestic abuse counselor, regardless of whether the initial, the initial message is that that position has been stayed, in other words, that position has been eliminated, I for one would like to continue funding that. My position would be to continue funding, rather than lay someone off, continue funding that position for a short period of time. Because I think you're going to see a lot of challenges to some of the executive orders that the president has issued. I don't know whether those challenges will be successful. But I think it's important that we not react too quickly and cause harm to ourselves. I think we need to take a very calm and measured approach. I mean, I realize these are emotional issues, but it's important that we continue to govern well and govern with a measured approach. So like I said, I for one, even if the initial notice is that this position is eliminated, I would say, well, we're going to continue funding it until we see some of these legal challenges, you know, play out. It's too important a position to just give up. So we'll see. We'll keep you all informed, promise. Anything else, sir?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel, under new business, how's everyone doing, by the way? That, I can feel it in my nostrils, it's kind of stinky, but it's okay. I mean, I'm okay with it. Everybody good? Okay. Then we'll move on to Item 8A on the agenda. This is a volunteer appointment for the Cow Pasture Stewardship Committee. Come on up. It's all yours. Introduce yourself. Tell us a little about yourself.
Hi, my name is Emily Hoffman. I've lived in Berry since September of 2021. And I've been looking for ways to get more involved. So I am a frequent walker of the cow pasture. It's beautiful. And I'd love to, of the committee, manage it. And I work for the Vermont Flannel Company, which is owned by USA Brands now. I do marketing and graphic design. So happy to bring any kind of communications and graphic design-related experience I can to the committee. And, yeah, is there, happy to answer other questions and a little loopy from the...
You seem nervous, don't be. We're all just, you're right in my neighborhood. We're all just in Counsel Spalding's neighborhood. We're all just neighbors here, so it's all good. Did you have a question, Counsel Spalding?
I do. I, first, I want to thank the Cow Pasture Committee for their very thorough recruitment, member recruitment and expectations document that they have on the website. It's fantastic. I'm assuming that you've read it.
I did.
And that you followed all of the expectations that you'll, or you're willing to, that you've done all the things because you're interested in becoming a member and that you're willing to follow all the expectations as they've laid out.
I have, except I haven't, I believe, one of the requests... I have, except I haven't, I believe, one of the requirements is to attend a committee meeting, which I have not yet.
Okay. But you have had a conversation with the committee chair, and you've.
Yeah, I would like to interject here.
Okay.
If that's appropriate. I just wanted, the first that I knew that Emily was interested in this position was that she received my contact information and emailed me with her application that she submitted. I thought it was September 24, but it was in September 2023. So it got lost someplace in, it was an inappropriate email address on the form?
Yeah, I emailed it to execassist@barrycity.org, and I think it may have gotten lost and.
Oh. So just probably a week and a half ago, I got an email from Emily expressing, and she was expressing her interest, and she sent her application. So there was like a bit of a disconnect in that. And, and there has been a disconnect in communication between our membership agreement or, you know, commitments, expectations. So I have taken the time today to kind of draft up a policy recommendation for the Barry City committee appointments. I'd like to share that, share that with you so that I think that there's a better communication between expectations of the committee and council appointments. And so Emily has not attended a meeting, but she seems to, she was, you know, assigned, you know, she was put on this committee's, this council meeting's agenda for this evening, and we felt like it was appropriate to move forward with her appointment. She seems to have, will add value to the, to the committee. So although she hasn't attended a committee meeting to meet us and share with us what her interests are and what the committee expectations are, she did read the documents based on our conversation and then did also review the management plan. So she knows pretty much what the committee's goals and expectations are and a bit of what we've been doing over the years. So, so should I, like, kind of address the committee with the, or with the council with this list of?
Okay. Are you referring, are you referring to your, the charge, which is a different item on the agenda?
It is a different item on the agenda.
Right.
This is just basically a recommendation to the council as to what would be from my person, I didn't get to speak to the committee, so it's coming from me personally and not the committee, recommendations on how to move forward with committee expectations.
Committee expectations or committee, you said two different.
Committee appointments.
Okay, if you, I think if you want to leave that, what I suggest is why don't you leave that with Nicholas? Let him review it. And if he thinks, if he wants to bring it before the council, we can certainly do that. If he doesn't want to bring it to the council, and you do, you let Nicholas know, and we'll get you on the agenda for that.
Yeah, we had a few email exchanges, and he thought that the council would be receptive to this. So I did bring copies of that.
Great.
So that I can leave them with each of you.
Yeah, that, that would be fine. Yes.
It's a one-page handout?
It is.
It'll take you about a minute to read?
Aye, yes.
Yeah, and it's not on the agenda, and I'd like the manager to, because it's policy, I'd like the man, and council policy, I'd like the manager to have the opportunity to review it, because, I mean, we're not going to vote on it. And what I'm saying is, we'll get it on the agenda at a later meeting. But I think the greater point is, Emily, you're that patient and kind? Holy cow! First of all, we're, listen, you know, we try to be perfect all the time. We really do. And obviously, if, if you first applied to the committee and somehow it got missed, I'm not aware that I've ever heard this before, but wow. I mean, for you to be patient for a year and not, I mean, if that ever happens and you don't get a response, the council likes to respond, the manager likes to respond, you don't wait a year. You wait like, I don't know, 60 days as a courtesy, and then, so, I don't know, counsel, can we appoint Emily retroactive, like, one year or something? I don't have a problem doing it, but I think there has to be some sort of recognition that we apologize for the error because we try to do better than that. And congratulations, most importantly, to your parents for raising such a patient and kind young lady. So I'm all over this appointment, counsel. Who wants to make the motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. It is moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Was that retroactive to September of 2023?
9/7/23.
I realize it's meaningless other than an acknowledgement of how kind and patient you are. So that was retroactive to September.
Certainly.
Okay, of '23. Any objection, counsel? I know, it's weird.
I just have a quick question on that, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Would that, would that cause retroactive quorum problems?
I am, I am making a mess, aren't I?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll just make it as of today. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Counsel Guston, for keeping me on the straight and narrow. It's not easy.
I was going to also suggest, if that's the case, and it's like a certain term, and then that she will have served a term, a year without even being there, so let's just be, have it be today so she can serve her full term.
Yes, we can do that. But I, but I still appreciate you, Emily.
Thank you.
All those in favor, the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you very much. Welcome aboard. Counsel, I should have mentioned that Counsel Guston is joining us remotely, but I think you may have seen her email. Thank you, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're going to move on. Why don't you stay right there, because we're going to move on to approve the, and Emily, if you want to stay up here, that's fine, because you're part of the committee, and we're going to discuss and hopefully approve the Cow Pasture Stewardship Committee charge. It's all yours.
Yeah, well, I submitted to you the committee mission statement and the committee vision statement, and those date back to 2017. At that point in time, the committee was creating a management plan for the Cow Pasture Stewardship Committee, and part of that process was to create these mission and vision statements. So they date back to 2017. In a recent committee meeting, we discussed, you know, as to whether or not we wanted to make a revision to these charges, you know, the committee vision and mission statement, and we reviewed them as a committee, and all felt, they kind of met the test of time in that we still felt like that these were appropriate for our committee. And there were no revisions to what was proposed by the committee in 2017, which I was the only member at that time on the committee, so I certainly wanted our current committee to have, to be able to chime in. So I don't know if you have any questions on what is presented?
I don't. I think it's very well done. Counsel, did you have any questions?
I'd make a motion to approve the Barry City Cow Pasture Stewardship Committee charge as presented.
Thank you very much. Moved by Counsel Spalding, seconded by Counsel Guston. Is there any discussion, counsel? Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. And those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
So I suspect that perhaps I was, it was suggested that I might be able to give the committee an update on what we have been doing this past year, but maybe that would have been more appropriate.
Happy to, happy to take a few minutes and do that. Sure.
Great. The committee has been extremely busy and most focused on completing, I think many of you here are aware of the Ursa grant that the city has received. And I don't know, it dates back to 2021 when we applied for the grant, and there was a delay in giving the city the grant by a year or two. So we have one more year to, we've been working on it for a year, and another year to complete the work on the Ursa grant. But, you know, first of all, I want to thank the city for supporting the grant. You know, Janet Shatney, we provided her with the information, and she submitted it to the state of Vermont FPR on behalf of the committee and the Public Works Division, who has provided in-kind work on, for the grant, and that work has already been completed as of this summer. So the grant, the projects included land acquisition, and that went through, which was a very valuable addition to the cow pasture. It protected the only parking lot that we have for the cow pasture, and also a popular trail that leads to the cow pasture access trail that leads to the property. This year, we've already constructed a new foot trail and a pedestrian bridge crossing the stream. This is all part of the grant. We've done various trail improvement projects. We've opened an abandoned emergency brush hog access route from Route 14, and the Public Works Department replaced a gate that was pretty much grown in and non-functioning. So we now have a working, and removed hazardous trees along this route as well. So the city now has a route in case there's ever in a fire or an emergency, they can get into the, into the cow pasture. The roadbed has been, has been restored. And so also with the grant, there is a trail assessment, and that has, that's a work in progress, but that is looking at all the trail systems that we have and making recommendations on what additional things that we might consider. We are going to be receiving new kiosk signs with new maps for the trail system and wave finding signs on the cow pasture. So people who are not familiar with the cow pasture property can navigate the space and find, and throughout the property on three different places, come upon maps telling them where they are and where, on the trail network system. There's going to be new trail names. The committee voted on trail names for the cow pasture and signage throughout. And the committee also was able to purchase trail maintenance tools, which is incredible. We've all kind of been volunteering our shovels and whatever rakes and things that we've had, committee members have had, but now we have a whole set of appropriate trail maintenance tools that we'll be putting to use this summer. So also, committee initiatives, we have two advisory work groups that have played, you know, done a tremendous work, an invasive species advisory group, and that group reports back to the committee, has a committee member on it. So they're kind of advancing initiatives that current members that are on, either on the advisory groups and bringing in the general public to help with that. And there's also a, a, I think I got, get the Access and Conservation Advisory Work Group that has been doing great work as well. And one of the issues that they've come upon is that we've realized that a small portion of the trail, actually, the access trail to the city's cow pasture goes across private land. So we are working on a landowner agreement and have submitted that to the city for approval, going through their attorney, and hopefully, hope to clear up that issue. The landowner is more than happy, you know, has had the property, more than happy to, I think it's no more than 200 feet that cross the property. But, so those are things we've worked on, community engagement, Green Up Day, career senators for the exploratory class partnership. The, that class has been up at the cow pasture, I think, for three years, maybe four years now, using the pasture property as a classroom to learn about, first of all, they start off with reviewing our management plan and learning the importance of those documents, and then they actually go up there and learn about invasive species and appropriate removal, and then they choose a project and have like at least two days, workdays in the cow pasture for the last three or four years, and have made incredible progress towards our goals with invasive species. So again, I want to finalize by thanking the committee, the council, for their support for the works that we do on, at the cow pasture, and also on the Public Works Department that has assisted us in the past, and especially with this Ursa grant, and the Planning and Zoning Committee, Janet Shatney specifically, for being the liaison between the committee and the state of Vermont. And if there's any questions?
Any questions, counsel? Big thank you. Your, you know, your committee is really one of the higher functioning committees. It's one of the committees, I, I think about it every time I drive by the cow pasture, but I don't really have to think about it a whole lot, because you just, you do the work, you get the grants, you function at a high level. And thank you, you're just great, that committee is, you're just great stewards of that resource and of the cow pasture.
You're welcome. It's easy to, it's an easy committee to, everyone loves open green space, so it's not really a controversial committee in that way, so.
Well, I mean, you know, sometimes, I mean, the, let's face it, sometimes the uses collide a little bit. It's not, it's not always harmony, but you always find a way to work it out. You always find a way to work together, and that's so important. So thank you for that. And I sat here, realized, Emily, that, thank you, Counsel Guston, for saving Emily from me, because had we appointed you retroactively, it would have meant your automatic removal because you would have missed 12 meetings. So I do stand corrected, and welcome aboard again, Emily. And thank you. Oh, can I, would you mind giving Nicholas your suggestions for the, yeah?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Good to see you, Chris. Thank you. Okay, counsel word, item 8C on the agenda. This is the Youth First Mentoring Presentation. I'll take good care of you, Sally. Thank you.
Sally, just let me know when to move.
When to.
Yeah.
And if you want to introduce yourself and a little bit about the program first?
So Sally Russell, I've met some of you before. I am the Program Director of Youth First Mentoring, and we recently expanded our geographical reach to include Barry City. When I took over as Program Director in January 2023, I have roots to Barry, going back to my childhood. My grandmother lived here, and I spent all my summers on Avril Street, so have some fun river stories to share with her. So when I took over, I was curious why we weren't serving Barry City youth, and they said, we can serve Barry City youth, you just have to find the way to fund it. So I wrote a couple of grants, and I have some short-term funding to get us through our rollout into Barry. So we're now almost a year in, and have been able to make matches, several mentor matches and recruit several mentors from Barry City. So Youth First Mentoring started out 26 years ago as girls, boys first. We rebranded a couple of years ago. We serve youth ages eight to 18. We get referrals from different youth service organizations, schools, pediatricians, social workers. And we can switch. Yeah, okay, our mission, good. So our mission is pretty simple. So we try to close the opportunity gap by driving equity through the mentoring relationships. We empower youth through our enrichment and our access to resources, and we try to advance awareness of the positive outcomes of investing in youth. If anyone was listening to your yesterday, you might have heard the story on, I think it was the Money Market Show, about how investment in youth, it recoups its cost in seven years, and it impacts for a lifetime economically. So those dollars come back to communities. So our mission, so we talked about that. So 100% of our kids face multiple barriers. So for example, single-parent households, they might be first generation or newly arrived Americans from refugee communities. We have youth who come from households with parents with maybe mental health issues or being raised by grandparents, or children coming out of foster care and they're being adopted into new families. We don't need to have those high issues, a child, any child could join our program. We don't need to have those high issues, a child, any child could join our program. But we typically serve, you know, students that are identified by other adults in the community as needing support and mentor. We can go to the next one. So we exist because youth need our support. So these statistics come from the latest Vermont Youth Risk Behavior Survey. And I'm sure you're aware of these, but we have, you know, youth, you know, consuming drugs, alcohol, reporting that their mental health is not good. Moreover, one in three youth in the country report not having any trusted adults that they can go to in their life. So there are many different types of mentoring. We have a more formal mentoring and then informal mentoring. I mean, studies show that the strongest benefit to mentoring comes in those natural relationships that you would find in a neighborhood or a, you know, aunt, uncle, a family friend. Absent of those, formal mentoring relationships can come in and add a layer of support for kids who don't have access to those natural mentoring relationships. There are school based mentoring and then there's community based mentoring. Youth First Mentoring is community based. So our mentor pairs will be matched and they will spend their time with each other in the community, going to events, learning new skills, attending shows or going to museums or even hanging out at the mentor's house. Any questions about anything so far? Okay. So we go on, so how we help. So we recruit, train, monitor and support adult volunteers. They are really the workers of our organization. We get referrals from schools and families or other organizations that have access to youth and that know about our program. And that's kind of why I'm here today. I want you to know that we exist and that we're here to help youth in Berry City. Additionally, for the last 10 years, our board has committed to raising money to provide what we call enrichment opportunities. So we fund overnight sleep camp for all our mentees that want it. If they don't want to go to a week overnight camp, they can use those funds to, you know, use music lessons or practice, you know, driving tests and those sorts of things. So we give our families a small stipend to be able to afford out of school, third place activities that many of our kids don't have access to for financial problems. And we also, through our partnership with Mentor Vermont, which is our state organization, provide opportunities for civic engagement. So for example, next week, we'll be going to the state house and hearing the governor or whoever his designated person is read a declaration about youth mentoring and we'll go speak with our local representatives. And the youth will be there and tell them about mentoring and why it's important. So, next. So this is my favorite slide. My, my 15 year old said it looked very bad. It was overlapped, but. So here's some real life pictures of our mentors. So once a pair is matched, after we do the background checks and we match based on interests, they get together and they decide what they want to do. And sometimes that's just playing basketball, sometimes they'll ride bikes, but you can just see it's all sorts of different things. Our average mentor match is together in our program for 4.3 years and our longest mentor match has been together, they're now in their 11th year. So this is a really transformative program for kids. Impact is clear. These statistics come from the Annie Casey Foundation and talk about generally, mentor mentoring in general for youth. But youth who are are mentored have considerably more success in later life. In fact, the latest statistics is a 15% boost in lifetime income. That's huge. They are, many are able to move from one income level to the next, 20% more likely to attend college or post secondary training of some sort. So the impact is very clear and we're hoping that these funding freezes don't impact much because honestly, we're more than 50% grant funded. And if our grants are not there, we won't be able to exist. So the next slide is just a little snapshot of our, you know, how we spend our money and how we're funded. So our primary grants right now from Mentor Vermont, we have our Berry based grant on the LPO, which is managed by the United Way. That's a prevention grant and that's funding our expansion right now. And then we have an enrichment grant from the Vermont Children's Trust and the rest we raise ourselves. So we put out an annual appeal, we reach out to civic groups, churches and other foundations like Ben &amp; Jerry's and our banks and town and so forth and the business community. And so one of the things I'm here for is to introduce our program to you, but also to ask you to help us take, you know, by taking action, either by identifying businesses that might be interested in supporting us annually, you know, our average business donation, it's not that huge, it's like $700, $2,000, but it makes a huge difference in being able to add more mentor pairs. It's just under $2,000 per year per mentor pair in direct program costs alone. Or help us develop an annual appeal list or even consider us from town funding. So a Middlesex gives us $300 a year, Montpelier gives us 1,700. So every town gives what it can, but it would be great if Berry City could consider supporting our program as well. My goal is to anchor about $25,000 more in our revenue to be able to hire a part time person to just focus on Berry recruitment. And so that would allow us to serve like 15 to 20 students or youth in Berry instead of the five to 10 we can now. So. Here's the program and it's.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Absolutely, you can. So how many kids would you say that you've served in the last year here in Berry City?
How many families have I had contact with and how many have we actually placed?
I like both numbers.
Contact with.
Just the ballpark's fine. I'm not looking to like fully on it.
Nine families.
Yep.
Nine families. And I have placed three and I'm about to place two more.
And what does capacity look like right now?
So I'm the only paid employee. I work 32 hours a week, which is really the max that the organization can pay.
Yep.
On salary. I, I have currently have 21 mentor matches in our whole program. I could probably do 26 before quality stopped. Was affected.
And my last question, I wrote down barriers. Obviously, we're going to say funding is a huge barrier, but I'm pretty deep within our youth in the community between formerly coaching and working in the school and some other things. And I've never heard of the program before, so I'm really excited to see you present here and hope that we can find some ways to increase your capacity and even, I know to me, mentoring was a huge part of my childhood, that somebody was able to help mentor me and brought me in from some really serious situations. So what are some barriers other than financial resources that you see that we might be able to help you with? Because we are a cash strapped community. But, you know, so I just, you know, want to think outside of the financial box and say, you know, how can we as the government body here help you, you know, move this along, help more people because we have a community that that really does need help?
Yeah, it's a fantastic question. I think, like you said, people didn't know we existed and were serving meaning there. So for the city to acknowledge us in some way is legitimizing our presence here and people will then be more apt to, you know, say they want to be in an annual appeal list or a business would say, hey, yeah, I'll, you know, I'll donate $200 to whatever. So just really just saying, oh yeah, this, this organization exists, identifying partners for us. So if you know of other youth serving organizations that might dovetail with what we're doing, introducing us, inviting us to youth oriented meetings so that we're also in the know with other organizations in the community. Because I think that Berry could sustain its own program.
Sure.
Me, Montpelier and the other towns we serve are kind of running over on this parallel, you know, structure. But I think that Berry could really have and operate its own under our umbrella. There's no need to reinvent the wheel. We have all of the, you know, systems in place to expand here. But as a one person program director, I don't know everybody and I don't know all of the avenues for doing that. So I'm really open to conversations.
Yeah, either or.
I think the Councilwoman Spalding is up first.
I just have a question about, because I don't, I, I know this, this is a thing, but I don't know, I'm fairly new on the council. To get, for town funding, could Youth First Mentoring get signatures to get on the ballot for, to request funds? So if there's a way that we can help you with that process, I'd be happy to help you try to get signatures. I live in Berry City, obviously, I'd be happy to try to get, I'm sure there are other people who'd be happy to.
A 5% of the voters?
Which sounds like a lot. It's really not, it's really not that difficult. And the fortunate thing is, we're not talking about a March town meeting day, we're talking about a May town, town meeting day.
Oh, okay.
So now that doesn't mean you have until May. We've got to back that up probably 45 days, give or take.
Yeah.
You know, give or take. But still, you know, plenty of time to, I mean, I remember getting things on a signature, someone would go to Hanaford's, someone would go to Grand Union or Price Chopper, you'd spend the morning there and literally you'd have your signatures in the morning. So it's good suggestion, not as daunting as it sounds.
I also think it would be really great if, just to have you on the ballot, because then everybody who votes sees it as well. And then they're like, well, what's this Youth First Mentoring? And maybe they'll look you up and be interested in helping you out as well. So I think that's a really great way, first of all, to just hopefully get some more funding, but also more exposure.
Excellent. Yeah, I'll reach out to someone about that.
So I imagine that you never have enough mentors, but also that your capacity to like train and supervise and provide support is limited because you are the one person who's doing everything. So eventual growth includes somebody else?
Yes, that's my goal with, with my program in general, is if we're going to truly meet the needs, you know, we, we can't serve all of the children that need mentors. Some, you know, our mentors are not professional therapists, they're not professional educators. Like the, the families that we take have to be stable for the most part or be, have been stable for a significant amount of time before that they're appropriate for our program. But the goal has always been that if, you know, we're going to meet the need that's there, we need to expand. And that would require hiring another part time position of at least 20 hours. And in my mind, I mean, I'm not the only one to make these decisions, but that would be a Berry focused position. Someone, the person I would envision would know this community well. So then we would have me, I'm from Montpelier and this other person. And that would be our.
Yes. So you say a Berry more, more so specific person, about 20 hours a week. Now, what would that cost?
Yeah, so.
I mean, let's talk money.
So, so 25 bucks an hour, 20 hours a week, $500, sorry, 20 hours a week, $500 a week. What's that? 40 something thousand a year plus the insurance, workman's comp, all that. What do we add? 20% on top of that probably? Yeah. So that's.
Sixty, seventy.
Yeah. No, sixty something.
Mm-hmm. But a potentially.
I'm sure, I'm pretty fairly certain that I could get increased grant funds for, from Mentor Vermont at a per, per mentee rate of like $1,000. So it wouldn't have to be all raised from annual appeals or businesses. Like there would be grant money that I could access to help boost us.
And, you know, I might suggest also, we have, we're very fortunate in Berry. We have some incredible service organizations like Rotary, Kiwanis, Lions. They're always looking for speakers, folks who will go and talk and always looking for great organizations to support. So I might suggest that you, that you reach out to them as well. I mean, I think mentoring, it's a great program. I mean, there isn't one of us sitting here or if there is, you're not successful because it doesn't matter, even when you're in your 60s. I have mentors. I have people that, that I look to to this day, people who, business people, friends, people that I've known for 40 or 50 years. And when I have an issue or an important decision to make, you seek them out and you talk to them. You know, some people call it a network, some people call it your friends, but it's really a mentor. It's someone who helps you see things clearly and helps you look at all sides. So, you know, I think those of us who are fortunate have a wide cast of mentors that we can look to in our lives. So I, I think the program's absolutely incredible and I could, I could absolutely see some of our service organizations supporting you as well as the city.
Great, so I'll get those signatures.
Mr. McKenzie, do you have a question?
No, Mr. Mayor, I have a comment. Just, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the speaker's name.
Sally Russell.
Say again?
Sally Russell.
Hi Sally, I'm president of the Berry Kiwanis Club. I range the speakers and you're on my list of contact to come speak to the club.
Perfect. Look forward to it.
Is your, is this presentation on our webpage?
It's in the packet, yeah.
Oh, okay. So, so for those who are watching who are just saying, well, how do I get a hold of Sally? If you, the, her presentation is in the packet, which is on the city webpage and I believe on the second to the last page rather, is her email address. So Sally Russell, you can find her email address on the last page of the presentation packet. Thank you, Sally Russell.
Thank you, everybody.
A pleasure.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
And when did you used to summer on Avril Street? Because you look familiar.
So, yeah, so my grandmother lived on Avril.
You don't have to answer that question. I'd get.
The 80s.
Elbow.
So the late 70s and 80s.
Okay.
And I was married, and I'm aging myself. Thank you.
Pleased to meet you. Thank you. Okay, Council, we are at item 8D on the agenda. This is the first reading. It was actually warned for 7:00 PM. We're a little bit late, but I think we're okay. This is ordinance 2025-1. This is our open meeting law updates. As you recall, Council, at our last council meeting, we said we would be updating city ordinances to conform with Vermont's current open meeting law. This, this does that, so I'll entertain any questions or comments. Okay, then the appropriate motion would be to.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, sure.
I raised my hand very late. I have a couple of questions or maybe comments or maybe just proofreading errors. So on section 221, under charter reference, it says, "Council to meet twice monthly on every Tuesday." And I'm not sure how we can meet twice monthly on every Tuesday, so I think every should be struck.
I think it's twice. I think it's twice a month. I think it said, would, it used to say every other Tuesday?
I, well, I think right now it's supposed to say twice monthly on Tuesday, but it says on, twice monthly on every Tuesday.
Oh, then we need to strike that.
So we need to strike that. And then, this is a question just that we can bring up at another time. But under 261 reporting requirements, it says, "The head of each department shall submit monthly reports to the council, which shall cover the activities of the department and other matters deemed pertinent." I have yet to see those reports, so I would love to see them. And there was one more, I think. Oh, I have a question about why the Recreation Department is being completely obliterated.
That's just to reflect the, the fact that there's no Recreation Department staff person at this moment. So I made, since we were in the ordinance, I went through and, and made corrections to reflect the current organization of the, of the city.
So I guess my concern is that if it's gone, will it be harder to bring it back? Because now it doesn't exist.
I, I don't think so. I don't think there's anything that would say that if we don't have it in ordinance, we can't staff one or fund it. So we have been doing recreation by committee, essentially. So we are, for example, you may, you may, you may have seen on our social media, we've, we've scheduled Zuma classes at Alumni Hall. That's something that, we found an instructor who was willing to do it, and we're sort of, you know, we're, we're paying her to do the class, and there's a small fee to participate in it. We're talking with some of the sport organizations to try to arrange for free or low-cost events on the turf, things like that. So we are, we're doing recreation sort of on a, like I said, committee basis is the best way I can think of describing it. But if we were to, if it were a priority of the city council to fund a recreation position, I don't think the fact that it's not in ordinance would be any, any barrier to doing that.
Okay. I think that's all I have. My other comments are going to be for the rules of procedure, so that's all I have. Thank you.
So under 261, Council, any objection to changing shall to may?
Which one?
261, reporting requirements. Is there any objection to changing shall to may? Otherwise, we'll be likely violating ordinance on, on a monthly basis.
Could we, could we change it to, "The head of each department shall submit quarterly reports to the council," and then make it less-
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
That sounds good to me.
Any objection? I'll see your quarterly, and I'll raise you a may. You know, the only reason being, i-if, for some reason it sneaks by, you know, you're, historically, department heads are reported to the manager, and manager reports to the council. So in terms of the chain of command, it, it does make it, it does make it a little awkward because there's a very clear chain of command that we don't interact with department heads as a mayor, or as councilors, as individual. And even as councilor's body, we work through the manager. So honestly, I don't know how many times I've probably looked at this ordinance, and I've never noticed that there's actually a requirement for department heads to submit reports to the council on a monthly basis. So all that means is that we have, on a monthly basis, four years and years and years violated ordinance. Council Augustine, did you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, sort of in that line. I'm comfortable with changing it to quarterly. I would be comfortable with changing it to may, with my expressed understanding and agreement with Councilor Spalding, that I would also love to see reports. And they're not reporting to, they're simply a prized event. I'm, I guess I'm thinking of them as, as a prized of activities occurring, just so we have a high-level sense of that. But I would, I would look to the manager to give us a sense of whether this is feasible or not.
Yeah, and I'm happy to address it. So when I started, there used to be in the packets, like, a weekly thing that the department heads put together. You know, I looked at it, it was, I didn't think it was all that informative. It said, you know, answered calls, you know, responded to emails. And so what I've tried to do is, is at the department head meetings, before each council meeting, and in the week before, we sort of collect things that I can share at the manager's report, that are sort of department-wide, and that's sort of the highlights. Because you can go back and look at those old packets, there may have been some helpful information, but, you know, most of the stuff that was in those, in those reports that they were submitting was either being covered in my report, being covered in another memo, and then there were things left over, like I said, answering calls, responding to emails, which I don't think is super helpful, and it was basically one more thing for them to drop and do, right? So I, I think it, in my perspective, when I looked at it in the packet, I thought, this doesn't seem to be of much use. So we've sort of transitioned to making my manager's report incorporate the work of the departments. I'm sure we can make something quarterly work that's a little bit more substantive than that, and I think it probably would be more helpful for both, for the, for the members of the council than doing it on a monthly basis, anyhow, so.
So, yes.
I would like quarterly, I think that's great. And actually, when I was first on council, there were quarterly reports from the heads of different departments, and, you know, it's not like any, we're not really interfering, but it's really, really good for us to have that information, I appreciate it. So I would go with shall and quarterly. Sounds good to me.
Yeah, we actually got, we actually got a report at every council meeting. There was always a report from department heads, and, and I understood what, you know, essentially, we would get the call log from the police department. You know, we answered. So was it super helpful? Well, it gave us an understanding of their call volume, but that was sort of about it. You know, there was nothing about, well, we're doing this to address crime, we're doing this to address domestic violence. It was just literally, so I, I for one didn't find that super, super helpful. I think if we, if we leave it at may, submit quarterly reports, I mean, the council can always, it's a quarterly report. So if the council wants, for example, this evening, if the council said, we'd love to see Ms. Shatney at the next meeting or two to explain what she's doing. I'm sure Ms. Shatney, manager, you know, there's always been that sort of cooperative relationship. Manager would have Ms. Shatney in here to, to discuss what she's been doing. I just don't, like I said, I don't want to say shall, so that if somebody misses a quarterly report, with full understanding of the manager and the council, they've technically violated. You know, shall is a pretty strict word. Joelle Mulvaney, you had a question or a comment?
Yeah, I have, I have a question. Was the Berry City Equity Assessment Tool employed in the preparation of these changes?
No.
And why not?
Because I was going through the state law to conform it with state law, and I was going through the current organization of the departments to reflect what it currently exists.
But not all of the things in that, those changes are state law. Some of them, many of them are just ordinances or, or local processes. So my concern is that city council has adopted this tool in order for us to make more comprehensive and potentially better ordinances. So I'm concerned that it's not being used. So that's, that's my comment, and that's my question.
Okay, thank you. Joelle, your, your point's well-taken. I mean, I'm happy to, a-as I look at it, there's, you know, it talks about annual reports, what the council's doing, quarterly reports from department heads, what your agenda looks like, rules governing meetings. But I'm happy to, you know, I am familiar with the tool, and I thank you for it. And I'm happy, prior to the second reading, to make sure that this, to use the Equity Assessment Tool to analyze the changes that we've made.
That's great. I'd be happy to help. I mean, I don't, I'm not on the committee anymore, but I know a lot about this particular tool, and I would be happy to look it over. Just let me know.
Okay, I'll, I'll take you up on that. Do you have my, you have my email address?
I do.
Got it. Awesome.
I have mine, so there we are. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So Council, is any objection to shall and the quarterly? Yeah?
Well, my only question is, we've had may, and no one has really gotten into any trouble, so why can't we just leave it as shall? We, we've had shall in there-
Yeah.
And we haven't been doing it.
Right.
And here we are.
Well, it was never brought to my attention.
Well, but, so my-
So someone said, if someone, you know, again, so now that it's been brought to my attention, I look at supporting a law, an ordinance, a city ordinance that I know likely won't be far out.
Well, I think for-
And if you had brought this to my attention a year ago, I would have said, then let's change it. Let's, as a matter of fact, you know what? I'd probably be more in favor of striking 261.
I'm not-
And if the council wants a report from a department head, or they feel that they're not getting in enough information, we just ask the manager. And it's always been, historically, it's always been provided when we, so it's more a matter of policy. You know, having someone issue a report, it's not like the city's annual report or the setting of the tax rate. Honestly, I, I don't know that a quarter, that any report from a department head is ordinance-worthy. It's a, it's a policy, at best. Yes, Council Stockwell?
Could be that Council Augustine was before.
Oh, Council Augustine.
Sure. So I, I think that I would support a quarterly and leaving the shall language in, but what I would ask the manager to do is keep us apprised of what capacity on city staff looks like. And if at any point this becomes overly onerous, or if it starts to feel to council like this is reductive or redundant in any way to the manager's existing report in city council, then we can, then we can revisit that. And I, I would argue that this does serve an important transparency function, so it's a little above policy to me. It does fit into the, the category of ordinance for me. But my, my big concern is, is finding a way to do this that is useful and informative at council, but does not represent a sort of, as I said, overly reductive or overly redundant work for city staff.
Yes.
I wonder if, I mean, I, I would imagine the first one, maybe even two times, might be a little, you know, what do we, what are we actually looking for? But I would imagine that there are reports that are already being generated with information and statistics and data about what each department is doing that could fill in for this kind of a report. I don't, I don't, I'm hoping that it's not, like, we're asking them to do more work than they're already doing. And to Council Augustine's point, I think it would, if it's in the packet, it would be great information for the people in our community to be able to see, you know, you know, this is what has happened from the Public Works Department, and this is what happened in the last quarter from our, you know, Emergency Services Department. I think it would be really helpful. I think it would be really great to see, you know, how busy and how, how a really well-funded department can work really well for our city. So I think it's important.
Yes. What are the legal ramifications with shall, and we don't comply with our own ordinance? Nothing. I mean, I just asked the question- You don't go to ordinance's chair or anything like that. So we're not getting into legal troubles. Yeah. So Council, we're going to change monthly under 261. We're, what I'm hearing is, we're going to change monthly to quarterly in advances to a second reading. I would entertain that motion. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you. This is, we'll get this on for a second reading. Council, we are at item 8E on the agenda. This is to approve amendments to the City of Berry Rules of Procedure for Public Bodies. Any, yes, Council Spalding?
So, under B application, the first sentence, it says, "This policy shall apply to all regular, special, and emergency meetings of public bodies of the city of Berry City." I think you really only need one city in there. I don't know which one, but-
Second?
Sure.
Not second as in motion, second as in the second city.
The, the, the bodies of, of Berry City.
Correct.
Okay. The next question, under D, Procedure, City Council. One, "The mayor shall serve as a chair of the council. In the absence of the mayor, the council member present, present with the most seniority shall serve." Didn't, didn't we appoint or make a motion to appoint Council Stockwell to be that position? And wasn't necessarily the senior-most?
So would be, it should read, "A member designated by the council shall serve as acting mayor."
Okay. That would be great, if we could change that language. And in the number six, in the last sentence, it says, "Any statement from the public that is greater than 300 words or two minutes in length when read shall be provided in writing." The "greater than 300 words" was struck from the ordinance, so I was thinking we should probably strike it from here as well.
And actually, I would prefer may, not shall. Look, everybody has different styles as mayor. My style is, especially when folks are at their first council meeting, if someone wants to speak for five minutes, or even 10 minutes, I'd rather give them five or 10 personally, and I will, going forward, violate procedure, just to be clear, by giving them that five or 10 minutes, because I don't want to discourage someone who musters the courage to come to a council meeting for the first time. And it says, so this, again, shall is a little strict, and says that, "Any statement from the public that is greater than 300 words or two minutes in length when read shall be provided in writing." I mean, I'm not going to, I'm not going to require someone to do that as chair.
Well, and I'm fine with that, but I think maybe we should say, because if it is more than two minutes, and there are 50 people in here, I would, maybe we could just say, "At the discretion of the mayor."
Yeah.
Or the presiding member of the meeting.
Or you just say may.
Well, no, because if they, if there are 50 people here, I think we should encourage people to bring their statements in writing, because we're really maybe only going to give them two minutes.
And the last time we had that happen, there weren't 50. I mean, I don't, I don't know that I've ever seen 50. But we had a few. We had 15 at a meeting recently, and obviously, I noticed that, and I asked folks to take notice of that, and asked them to please be brief, and there were no issues. People were brief, and they were respectful, and meeting went great. As mayor, as chair, I always have the discretion to limit someone's time reasonably, and that is in state statute. So, you know, I mean, you can leave it as it is. I've told you what my position is, what my position will be going forward. You can adjust the rules of procedure all you want. Council Stockwell?
I think two minutes keeps us safer, and it makes us more transparent, and it looks like we're in a more equitable place if everybody has two minutes. And especially on those times when, you know, if someone's taking 10 minutes at the beginning of the meeting, then there's a pretty important issue at the end of the meeting. You know, those, those folks get squeezed, and people are tired. So it just seems like, yeah, you can be warm and friendly with people. I think that's really great and really important. But I think the two-minute limit makes us seem more transparent and more democratic.
I don't know how it makes us seem more transparent. If I had, if I held councilors to that same statute, to that same standard, I think we'd have some unhappy councilors. I mean, every meeting is different. That is just the way it is. And in a meeting when people, like I said, for folks who are at their first meeting, and they might be a little, you know, I mean, if there were 50 people here waiting to speak, then obviously, you make people aware of that in the beginning, and you limit it to two minutes. But I'm never going to do that. You can put anything in procedure all you want, I'm never going to do it. I am never going to say, anytime someone goes over two minutes, I'm cutting them off. I won't do it. Ms. Mulvaney?
Sorry, I'll just take my hand down. You, you made a, you made a statement that makes my comment impossible.
Council Augustine?
Just to, to clarify the conversation on this, Council, I just want to reiterate what I've heard, which is that my understanding is that Councilor Spalding suggested we delete the part about greater than 300 words, because it had already been removed in another section of ordinance, and change the shall to may be provided in writing. I think that gives us room to address what everyone is talking about, which is that there are situations where announcing a two-minute limit is fair to allow for plenty of public comment. And also, there are situations where providing a written testimony to council may, may serve the, some people's presentation styles, and some people's communication styles, and allow them to sort of get their, get their point across. We've had that, where councilors have read statements from constituents in meeting before that has effectively done the same thing. So that's what I'm hearing, is those two suggested changes to ordinance post, to what is warranted here and what is posted here, both of which I would support.
Okay.
Can I just ask a follow-up?
Sure.
Is the two minutes in the open meeting law, that changes in open meeting law, is there something in there about the two minutes?
Nope.
No? Why did I think that there was something in there?
Nope. I mean, you can, you don't have to. The law is smart enough to say, you may limit it to two minutes. You don't have to limit it to two minutes, because circumstances are different. Now, there's nothing, I mean, just- Now, there's nothing, I mean, just, as a point of order, what, and I think I heard it incorrectly, no one suggested that we limit comments to two minutes, because that isn't what this says. This says that if you're gonna make a comment that's greater than two minutes, it be provided to the body in writing. And I'm just saying, well, maybe.
My, if I may, my, my experience is that most people think that two minutes is not very long, and it's really more than long enough. People really bristled at only getting two minutes, and for the most part, most people can, can't even fill up two minutes. So I'm fine with it. I, um, I just think that having something in there at the discretion, which I guess is just redundant, because it already is at the discretion of the presiding officer of the meeting, it, it's fine.
Yeah. And like I said, that, that's honestly the way I feel about it. Meetings are different. And quite frankly, I'll just be honest with you. There have been times when people have gone on for two minutes, and that, and I think to myself, that's two minutes of my life that I'll never get back. And there are times when people have gone on for 15 minutes, and I wish that they could have gone on for 20, or 30, or 40, because they really had something impactful and meaningful to say. It's important to make sure that everyone is heard. And I would just be loath to say, you know, you can, you can be presenting something absolutely brilliant to the council, and if it's greater than two minutes, well, we gotta stop you. That's, I, I don't even know how to respond to that. Amy Gelford?
Yeah, I know, I noticed that the two minutes is referred to in that item six, where it's mostly talking about-
Sir, permission to speak?
Council meetings and statements from the public and things that go in the packet. And then it also shows up in 13A for public comment. There's a reference to the two minutes. So wherever you land on this, it seems like that's another place with the, the two minutes.
Sir, permission to speak?
It's just two minutes I'll never get back. Okay, Councilier Dearing?
I've got enough, no. I'm just putting my head on my hand, saying, I don't know.
There you go. It's all good. Okay, council, how would you like to proceed? Councilor Stockwell?
I just think maybe it needs a little bit more clarification. Like, if people are coming to comment on an issue, I think we should limit them to two minutes. If people are coming to make a presentation, we've asked them to make a presentation, or they requested it, and the time limits do not imply in that, in that case. But for the people commenting on an issue that's on the agenda, it just seems fair.
Look, I have more important things to do than sit here with a stopwatch. That's all I'm telling you. You, you can pass whatever procedure you, you want. I will never agree to limit someone to two minutes, hard, fast rule. I won't do it. It's not good public policy, it's not good governance, and I won't do it. Amy Gelford?
Sorry, I remembered the other thing I was gonna say, which is, maybe it could be preserving permission or authority for the city council to limit it where it's needed. Because if you have an issue where, you know, there's hardly anyone showing up, and you have several people who want to speak for five minutes, it probably doesn't matter. If you have a packed agenda and tons of people, then you might want to reserve the right to give people a turn, kind of like happened at the public safety meeting, right? Like, just to make sure everybody got a chance to speak. Anyway, maybe, maybe it's reserving the authority to limit it in the cases where you need to, but generally, you know, not having to limit it.
Thank you. Councilor Guston?
I just want to reiterate that the choice before us right now is to look at the sentence that is in Section 6 of the Rules of Procedure and amend it as what I have heard proposed from other counselors is to strike the section referring to greater than 300 words and to say, "may be provided in writing." There is not anything in this ordinance currently that requires anything about a two minutes that would require a very different moving forward in conversation tonight. So the task before us tonight is to, whether or not we amend the sentence to read with those changes and move this forward. As that, that is my understanding of what's before us right now.
Yep, I agree. Thank you.
I call the question?
I don't think, I don't think a motion has been made to adopt. So we don't have a question to call. If you would like to make a motion-
We're gonna make a motion to approve the procedures of-
The Rules of Procedure. Understood. Is there a second?
I would second that with the understanding, Councilor Dearing, if you would accept that the, the conversation that we've had this evening is that the sentence be amended as we've discussed.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. And that was, just so I make sure I have that straight, that was under Section 6. We were, you wanted to strike any statement from the public where it says, "is greater than 300 words," or, comma, or, so that it would read, "Any statement," and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilor, "any statement from the public that is greater than two minutes in length shall be provided in writing?"
Maybe.
May, may be provided, thank you. Okay, so any statement from the public that is greater than two minutes in length may be provided in writing?
Yes.
Yes, and I just want to reflect back to Councilor Spalding, because that was the first thing she had suggested. I want to make sure that my understanding of her suggestion is correct in, in relation to the, the question about the 300 words.
Yeah, the only reason I was suggesting that we strike 300 words is because we struck it in the ordinance.
Right. That was my understand, thank you. Thank you for reiterating, that was my understanding of what you said.
Okay, so council, we have an understanding. Any other discussion?
Councilor Sean Bill?
Leave?
No, I'm, I'm good now. I think that just clarified all of it, because I didn't want to vote on something when we didn't have total clarity at the end.
Okay, everyone good? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Thank you very much. Motion carries. Councilor Guston, Flood Resiliency Plan, please. Nicholas calling, the manager's calling that up for you right, right now.
Thank you very much, and it's actually the manager's presentation. So there's also something very strange going on in the chat, so perhaps the manager could also look at-
What's going on in the chat?
The tech while something is going on. It keeps, oh-
Oh, yes, I see.
It, and it keeps presenting as being from other people who are in the meeting when it pops up shortly in my chat. So there's just a, it doesn't seem to be impeding the meeting, but I did want to call attention as a possible tech concern.
Yep, I'm taking care of it.
Thank you. Um, so with that, I will just introduce this for folks, that as, as committed, we are doing our regular council update of the Flood Resiliency Plan. One section of that Flood Resiliency Plan calls for the city to pursue buyouts of properties that will lead to better floodplain and improve the city's floodresiliency in that way. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the city manager, who will present an update on where we stand in this moment with the buyouts that, this is an update on material he's presented previously with buyouts.
Yeah, thank you. So there was a presentation in your packet that I will start working through now. So buyouts by the numbers, there were 67 buyout applicants that came in. 28 have been approved by the city to move forward. And just for, for the general context, for a buyout application to get to conclusion, it has to be both approved by the city and the municipality and the, and the property owner. So the, the 67 applicants were, you know, in, in their way, indicating their approval for the buyout, and the city reciprocated approval on 28 of them. 39 have not been pursued, and the reason for that is because FEMA buyouts include a condition that the property may never be redeveloped. So because of that provision, we have only pursued properties with the greatest mitigation value and not pursued buyouts where parcels could be, houses could be either redeveloped, parcels could be redeveloped or elevated. Of the 28 buyout applications that we've approved, they account for approximately $124,500 in what would be lost property tax revenue, assuming they all go to a close. And I think in, in positive news, 17 of the 28 have been approved by FEMA, and that's in quotations, which means that they're, they're moving forward. And, and, and that includes all the landslide buyouts, by the way. So they're moving forward, we're, we're getting to appraisal stage with those properties. They're doing verification and duplication of benefits. They need to make sure that people didn't get double benefit from FEMA. So for example, if you received a FEMA award to do work on your house, that is subtracted from the buyout amount, right? So this is, this is the stage we're at, which is good. And we expect, we expect them to keep moving forward. I think that we feel really confident about the applicant, the, the buyout applications that we've approved in terms of having mitigation value. So we expect that as FEMA is able to keep processing these, that, that will get to full application of those 28 applications that, that the city agreed to move forward with. And so I'm gonna go now into the, the next few visual slides, so you can get a visual of, of how this looks. This is the North End. The yellow parcel there, 572, is a city-approved parcel. This one has not been approved yet by FEMA, but again, this is one where we, we also think is a home run and is part of many of our river projects that we talked about in the, the last several months. This would help fortification of the Willie Street Bridge, for example. The North End buyouts that you also see here in the residential portions are, they're, they're possible non-FEMA buyouts. We haven't moved forward with these, with the, with the understanding that this is a potential redevelopment site. So none of the residential properties have been, have been pursued in this particular neighborhood, knowing that there's opportunities to, to do more flood-resilient housing in the area. The estimated taxes of, of what would be the one-approved property in this, in this graphic here would be approximately $9,000. This is going over to Vine Streets, Scampini Square, Berlin Street area. So the, again, the same color coding here, except we added, added a couple new colors. The green are all FEMA-approved, so that's really positive. Those are all properties that are on track to, to be bought out. The black one is a, is a little bit tricky. This one, this was one that the city did approve, but the applicant, the, the homeowner did not submit an application. So that one is a little bit in limbo at this moment. The red were not pursued. Those were, in our estimation, not, did not provide any further mitigation value, because they were not adjacent to the, to the cluster by the river. And then with the help of the River Program scientists, we pursued properties 10, 10 West Second, 19 West Second. They believe these are really good places to also deposit water. And so even though they're not clustered with anyone, they're, they're fairly large, as you can see. They, they're as large as several of the other properties. They're, they're, they include floodway, which is the hatched area, and would provide a, a great space on, certainly the property on 10 across the river from, from the Scampini Square buyout. So these are all under, these are, those also haven't been approved yet, but we also expect those to move forward as well. And the estimated property taxes lost for all the approved properties here would be about $36,000. Even more colors on this slide. So Harrington Avenue really quickly became a target area for us. We, we really looking to expand the trash racks that are already on site there. And we know that, you know, that's also a big river project for us. Those trash racks worked almost a little too well. So we're looking at ways to, to change it, so that we can allow, we can trap the debris, but allow the water to stay in the channel. So we have, you know, good news here, as you can see, the, the properties most immediately adjacent to the, to the trash rack area have been approved already. The, the pink you see there between the houses on Harrington and, and the river, and Gunners Brook, those are already floodplain, those are already city-owned. And we are, we have some red properties that were not approved. And, and one of them is because it was already deeded to the city. The others were not, they were not- They were socks to Nick's bed. They were on the floor, so I don't know where you got them from, so I put them on. Yep. There we go. So keeping going. So you can see there's, there's been two, there are two yellows that are approved that haven't, two, two yellow properties here outlined that were approved by the city, not yet approved by FEMA. And there's two, two blue properties here that were intakes in 2024. We are very, more interested on the Upper Brook Street properties there, because those could also complement the new and expanded trash rack area on Harrington Avenue. So those are still sort of in the, in the queue. Those were, as I said, 2024 intakes. But the green there is, I think, really positive news. The black property in this particular case was initially approved by the city, but that property was sold and, and is no longer interested in a buyout.
Good question.
Yep.
23 Brook Street, what's the mitigation purposes for that? In the blue for the 24 intake?
There is none. That's not a, that's not, that's an intake.
Okay.
So we're not, we don't think that'll be-
Okay.
That doesn't, that's not high on the list. That, that's just one that came in after the 23 flood. Yep, no worries. River Granite Street area, so this is also progressing relatively well. We have some green there around the, the houses on River Street, right adjacent to the river itself, to Stevens Branch. We had a similar situation, and I didn't put it on the key here, but you see another black square, which is an applicant that was approved by the city, but did not turn in their application. And then we have some yellows that are approved by the city, and hopefully, we'll be getting FEMA approval. I know, for example, on the, the 53 Granite Street, that's the big lot. They, we got an additional request for information on that, so we know that that's, that's a positive sign, right? We just don't have the formal approval yet, but that is one that, that should have some, some tremendous value. The blue property, you can see another 2024 intake. That one is also really compelling to us for maybe a, a second round of buyouts. This is adjacent to the playground. So this would also be a, a really good area to, to store water next to a property that also can, you know, store water if needed. And the estimated loss of property taxes on this slide would be $28,600. This is just a seaweed picture of the landslide buyouts, as I mentioned at the top of the meeting. All of the, the five landslide buyouts have been approved by FEMA. They were the first ones to go, in fact. And so you can see here on the graphic representation, the five stars where those properties are, are located. So those are, again, the first to go, move, all moving forward at this point. And the estimated property tax loss here is almost $17,000. So this is just giving you a general picture of, of the not-pursued buyouts that you couldn't see from the other zoomed-in slides, just to give you a sense visually of where they are. You can see some that, you know, that, we, we have the GIS map with the floodplains here, so you can see generally speaking where they're located. You know, I, I think there's some that, you know, the, it, it, these are all difficult decisions, you know. I, I think that if somebody applied for a buyout, there's, there's a reason for that. Again, we made decisions based on potential mitigation value, and, and that's why the, these, these have not been pursued at this point. But, you know, some of these are on the list for elevation, and hopefully, that, that becomes an option for, for them, and there's more funding to do that, to, to do more of them as we need, as you can, there's clearly a need for it. So that's the update. Like I said, since the last buyout update, I think that the big takeaway is that we've gotten to the point of getting to FEMA approvals. I know it's been a long road. When we did, you know, start this shortly after the 2023 flood, we did, we were very transparent with people that this is, this is a years-long process. This is multiple years, and here we are, 2025. We still haven't closed on any properties, but we are certainly seeing the finish line a little bit more clearly. But it's, it's certainly, yeah, a very long process. And we're, you know, I think hopeful and grateful that, you know, Vermont Emergency Management has been processing these for us. We have an MOU with them to, to really take these from, the moment we signed the application, we hand it to them, and they really take the ball from there, which has made this a lot smoother for, for all of us. So happy to entertain any, any questions?
First, closing, any, any anticipated, any ETA? When we can expect closings to occur?
I think we can expect some in the spring, and I know that that's another stress point for the property owners. Many of these properties, well, a, a number of them are rental properties, and so I, I know that that's- And so, I know that that's been stressful for the landlords because they'll have to, you know, some of them are still occupied. And so, that's become a stress point for some of the landlords because they'll have to, you know, care for their tenants. And so, they want to know sort of the timeframes that they'll have. And they usually get about three months' notice before we go to close. So, we're hoping that we get to some in the spring. You know, my, our experience has been that these things tend to happen in batches. We tend to get a bunches of approvals at once. And so, we're expecting that that might be the case, that we'll get a bunch of moving to the next step or final approvals all at once. And hopefully, that'll be here in the next couple of months. And then, we'll have three months, up to three months, to go to a closing from there. And as a reminder, you know, the property owners and the city can walk away at any point until the final signature is on the paper. And so, you know, we really don't show up until the very end to accept a deed, but, you know, there's, and the property owner, any misgivings they have until the day of closing, until the moment before closing, they are able to walk away from that table, so.
Right. Questions? Yes?
On the slide for the North End for all, and this is the only slide with purple, possible non-FEMA buyout identified. How, and maybe I've asked this before, so I apologize. How are we, as a city, going to buy out those properties?
How?
Yeah.
Well, if, if we do, it would be a combination of state or federal funds. I'm sure you saw the $68 million that was appropriated by Senator Welch. That is specifically for flood-impacted communities, so that could be a possible source of funds.
So, are we, do we have a plan that we're going to apply for those, for that funding?
Yes, we do, as soon as they develop the process for applying. So, the guidelines for applying for those funds have not yet been fully developed. I don't know if you've been following that.
Well, that's not my impression. But having a conversation with Central Vermont Economic Development, Melissa Bounty, she, I would think this would qualify for the first round of funding, if you will.
I think you're getting confused. I spoke to Melissa today, too. So, over the next 10 days, we're in the process, we have a list that we've developed of potential funding projects. So, specifically Prospect Heights, 143 North Main Street, if we chose to expand that, residential housing in the North End. This is certainly going to be on that list. So, that list is not, oh, you're funded, or oh, it's even an application. So, they're in the process now of collecting lists from municipalities, saying, "These are a list of possible projects within the city of Barry. If there's something you'd like to add to that list, please let me know."
Well, no, but I don't understand how Prospect Heights would qualify for flood.
Flood-impacted communities. The city of Barry is a flood-impacted community. So, it's, the emphasis is on housing, housing within flood-impacted communities. So, a community like Barry, where roughly 50 or so dwelling units were lost, would certainly qualify for replacement of those units. So, Prospect Heights does, in fact, qualify, will, in fact, be on that list.
Okay, well, I have some thoughts, but Councilor Augustine.
Yes, Councilor Augustine.
Certainly, I just wanted to update in regards to that, in relation to that. And as a reminder for council, there is a separate sort of goal within the Flood Resiliency Plan, which is to pursue different funding sources for non-FEMA buyouts, as the manager has identified in this slide. And the idea is that we are able to offer folks a reasonable assessed value of their property and then be able to transform that property into something that is redeveloped. As the manager had said, that there may be redevelopment potential in parts of the North End, especially as we've discussed previously with the river folks. If the Berlin Street Bridge is resolved in a way that makes flooding in that area less likely, then those areas become potentially less flood-impacted. We've got, I think, a little ways for the science to come back on that. And also, I was very kindly invited to a meeting last week with the manager and Pat Moulton and a handful of other folks about that funding, about the Senator Welch funding, as well as other potential funding sources to match with pieces of our flood plan. And so, there are conversations, I think productive conversations, going on about what funding for those pieces look like, although, as we've discussed already today, the federal funding situation is a tiny bit dicey right now, but I think that there's good productive potential in those conversations.
Yep, agree totally. Thank you. Yes?
Well, how do we have this conversation about things that other people on council would like to see, or perhaps people in the community would like to see, so that when the list goes in, it represents maybe more voices and more ideas? Is that a possibility?
In the next week? I mean, I guess the first suggestion, work harder. I mean, I've known about, I mean, this list has been out there that they're collecting this, they're collecting lists of projects. It certainly doesn't guarantee funding. It doesn't mean that the project is even going to be advanced by the city. It's a list of possible projects. I mean, that press release came out three weeks ago.
I guess I thought that the council would have some sort of public process where it'd be clear that there'd be a clear for discussing.
Then, why didn't you bring it forward? If you saw it three weeks ago, and you wanted the council to have a public process, why are you just bringing it up now?
Well, because I'm worried that we're going to miss out on an opportunity to do some interesting things in Barry. I have another question.
Then, why didn't you bring it up earlier?
I guess it was my assumption that the city manager would bring that to council. And then, you're right, that was my mistake. I should have moved on to that.
Sure was.
But it does seem like that perhaps we would want that information from people.
Well, you know, if there are projects that you would like to see on that list, and they can be, they can be projects as benign as a simple, single-home buyout, or they can be as big as a 100-unit apartment building. I mean, we can put whatever projects we want. What CB, what Central Vermont Economic Development Corporation is doing is gathering that list of projects.
Gotcha.
So, it's, yeah, anyone can submit it.
My other question is about 143 North Main Street and Prospect Heights. Are those going to meet the guidelines, as far as you know, for eligibility?
Well, they haven't developed the guidelines yet. So, I mean, what we know, so the state is in the process. I mean, you saw the press release, right? So, the state is going to be developing the guidelines for applying for the funds. Those guidelines haven't even been developed yet. What they are doing is they're collecting lists. They're looking at flood-impacted communities, and they're saying, "What opportunities exist within your community?" That press release came out weeks ago. And so, they're currently saying, "Well, what are the lists of possible projects within flood-impacted communities? And would you like to put those on a list?" That list doesn't, if you don't have a project on the list, it doesn't mean you can't put a project on the list later. So, the list is by no means exclusive. Understand?
Thank you.
Okay.
I would just add, if I may, that there's no, like, new projects. Like, everything that, you know, we have a list of 60 projects from the river process that we did go through a very extensive public process on, with the council, with the public. And so, there's no, you know, picking projects from, you know, that I'd want to do myself, right? These are all projects that are known to the council generally, right? So, Prospect Heights is one that is, you know, is well-known. All the mitigation projects, they're not brand-new. They're coming off of that river project. So, it's, I just, I just don't want there to be this notion that I'm making a decision about something to do that hasn't been talked about publicly in any way. These are all projects that exist, you know, that are known, one way or the other, to the council in terms of housing or flood mitigation. The housing projects, we all know. The mitigation projects are that really great river project list of 60 things that we all went through together.
Yeah, and North Seminary.
Correct, yeah. And that's also sort of moving on its own because it's its own sort of standalone project, but yeah, that's.
So, once we have, once we have a process for applying for funds, which we don't have yet, it hasn't been developed, and even the state is trying to figure out, how do they greatest, how do they leverage the funds the most? You know, is it a combination of federal funds? Do the, do these federal funds replace state funds? Do they free up state funds, which can then be more flexible? So, it's, I wouldn't say it's a slow-moving process. I mean, it's a process that is moving along quickly, but it's moving along deliberately and with transparency. I mean, the press releases are coming out, you know, and the guidelines are coming out weeks in advance. So, if, like I said, if any individual councillors have anything that they would like to add, please let me know. Councilor Augustine?
I would just like to clarify and apologize if I created confusion earlier, which is that the meeting I mentioned was not specific to the funding recently secured by Senator Welch, but was rather very, very general about all possible sources of federal funding, of which the funding secured by Senator Welch will likely, will likely be part. And I also look forward to published guidelines on that funding, and we can certainly have a conversation. But the projects that I presented and talked about and have been advocating for at council are all in the Flood Resiliency Plan that we adopted as a council, and that's what I'll continue to advocate for going forward. But I look forward to seeing the guidelines on this new funding source and matching up what we, what we've been talking about in council with that.
Correct. There are no, you know, and just to, just to be clear, there are no, there are no new areas. When you talk about projects, well, okay, what is, well, we know Prospect Heights. We know that Prospect Heights is a planned urban development. We can't tell you currently how many residential units it will result in. So, there are no projects being talked about in areas that have not been talked about specifically at multiple council meetings, none. AJ, sorry, you'll need to state your name for the record, if you don't mind.
Not a problem. My name is AJ Jones.
Thank you.
Ward 3, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yeah, we can, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm watching, and Mr. LaZon, you have been extremely condescending to Councilor Spalding and Councilor Stockwell this evening, and I do believe you owe both of them an apology immediately. Please and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Where's that fire emoji?
Now, please.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Council, we'll move on. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to item 8G on the agenda. This is to accept the BHB Prospect Street, Berlin Street report.
Thank you, Mayor. So, you, the council had in the packet the final report from BHB. They, I'm just trying to get to it. They reaffirmed their findings that the stop sign is not MUTD compliant. They recommend some short-term fixes, some short-term recommendations, which is a line striping and some longer-term fixes that could be cutting back the pavement to align with the line striping. I talked to the public and some other more invasive, not more invasive, more intensive solutions, like speed bumps and median islands. I talked to the Public Works Director. We're certainly able to do the line striping. That would happen sometime this spring. I think, as we've all experienced, I, here, the line striping typically cannot happen until May because of the temperatures needed for the paint to dry. So, that would be something that the Public Works Director said he would be able to have his crews do, or we would contract out as needed. And then, the cutting back of the pavement, we're planning to do some work in that area anyhow. And so, that could also be worked into Public Works planning for the coming construction season. But anyway, this is, this is really in the council's hands now. You know, we've, I know the request was for the stop sign. We've done the analysis, and we know it's not warranted, but it's, we understand and recognize it's the council's decision. And frankly, Brian and I are just looking for some closure on the topic.
I got one.
Yes?
I guess, to me, you know, the biggest issue I've had with this is just the consistency with data, with accidents and things of that, and not really being able to have any solid, concrete data to apply here. We talk about accidents and such. I mean, I personally believe that a four-way stop would be what's best here. I don't know that I have the support on council to put that forward. But realistically, I find that this intersection is extremely dangerous constantly. I find that we are really trying to grasp it, so many different multi-pronged approaches with this to get it fixed. And I'm concerned that all of these approaches that we're going to more than likely approve this evening aren't really going to change much, and we're going to revisit this situation when there's a death. So, that's really my reservation in a lot of this. As somebody who drives in this area a lot, that I don't know what it's going to take to get people to slow down. I don't believe that these traffic calming measures are going to work. But I also don't know that a stop sign's really going to make people stop either. So, there are still a lot of questions for me. So, I have a hard time really making a decision on this one.
Councilor Augustine?
Manager, I apologize. Did you discuss with the Director of Public Works the idea of the traffic calming island that was suggested as a more extensive change in the report?
We talked about, I think, that it's possible. I mean, I saw Ms. Perry's comments, which I think she wasn't in favor of it either. So, I'm worried about doing something that, you know, inflames the situation in the neighborhood. Those are, you know, they're certainly possibilities. We do unfortunately here have to worry about the plowing. So, that's, you know, something we'd have to make sure we build appropriately. You know, I think if, you know, when I first started, there were some really nice bull belts on Washington Street. I don't think there's any remnants of them left. They just take a beating. So, we would, you know, certainly explore it. You know, my sense, Councilor Augustine, was that, based on Ms. Perry's response, that it might further inflame the neighbors' feelings about the situation. And it'd probably be maybe on a longer-term glide path for that reason. Because if it doesn't make the people who requested it happy, and it also, you know, impacts the plowing and gets dinged by the plows, then it just may be for naught, is my worry. I think a speed bump could also, you know, maybe be a solution there. We're actually exploring, and although I know that, it sounded to me like that wouldn't also be what the neighbors want up there. We are exploring, we're in the process of purchasing some of the, you may have seen them in other communities, the, for lack of a better term, they're like plastic speed bumps that you can drill down into the pavement because they, they can be removed in the winter, right? So, that's, we just unfortunately have to make a lot of decisions based on that. And so, maybe that's a possibility when we have a couple of those in stock to use them up there. So, that's a long way to say, "Sort of." Sorry.
No, I appreciate the full, the full context and the full conversation. I would be in favor of putting in a speed bump there because I do, again, as Councilor John has said, that speed is a key concern here for safety reasons. And we've, we heard from the consultant that a stop sign is a different solution for a different problem. So, I, along with the suggestions that are already discussed, the repainting and the cutting of the roads to be more narrow and encourage a slower speed in that area, I think the speed bump is a start. I appreciate Brian's concern. I really, I think a median strip in this and in other areas in Barry City would really, would really help a lot of our traffic, our speeding concerns. As I said, we've had folks come to these meetings from other areas of the city, also with speeding concerns. There's a note on Front Porch Forum today from someone on Hill Street saying they just, people blow through, and you had, you spoke on yourself previously, they just blow through the four-way stop there because that street provides a straight lane for people to just keep, keep on driving, and the visibility is not great, and people are used to. to, to running it. So I would, I would love to see us explore in more detail. Other communities in Vermont are, adjust their plowing procedures to go around median strips and other such calming procedures. There's a really good example of the one in Danville in the report. I know Burlington just put in a whole bunch of new ones as well. They've got to have some, they've got to have, they've got to have some answers. They plow too. So I'd love to hear from them how they're resolving those problems, but in the near term, I think at the very least, a speed bump is, is a good suggestion for, to pursue beyond also what it's suggested in that report.
Sandra Perry?
Yes, hello. Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments regarding the whole report, and it, I know originally we had hoped that the effect of Prospect Heights would be included in that report, but I guess that VHB never got that message. But beyond that, with Jen Conley's presentation at the last meeting, and actually, I think it's worded in the report as well, that if the traffic site or visibility of the traffic cannot be maintained by keeping the vegetation down, that a stop sign could be put there to, to help. Now, it's, with all these other, with all the reports that have come into this, and my looking at it the whole thing as a whole, I understand some of the issues about a stop sign. That was our initial request, but if we can somehow make it safer, that'd be the best thing we can do. Now, she also said in her report that the fence to the right coming up Berlin is not the issue, it's the vegetation growing around that fence. I still contend that she has not eyeballed this particular intersection. When you come up Berlin Street, that fence is a chain-linked fence, but it is at such an angle that it does block, the fence itself blocks the vision of cars coming down Prospect Street. So, and she also indicated that that fence is in the right-of-way, which means the city could remove that fence and make it easier to take care of the vegetation on that side of the road. Because otherwise, the city's going to have, it's going to be harder for the city to take care of vegetation up against that fence. That fence is not new, it's ready to fall down, it is on the right-of-way, it should be removed, and then the vegetation can be kept at a lower level all the way around. So if that could be done, as well as any other traffic calming items they wanted to do, that would be great. I really think removing that fence and getting that, that sight of cars coming down Prospect when you, we are at Berlin, the lot of people, the only people that have to get at the Berlin stop sign coming up the hill, that is the biggest issue for the traffic coming down the hill, are those of us who have to actually cross that intersection completely to get to our neighborhood. Everyone else is either going to take a left or a right, but for us to actually cross that intersection, we have to look at traffic coming both directions, and that traffic coming down the hill, those are the ones going the fastest, those are the ones we can't see. And she mentioned in the report of moving stop signs to the appropriate places, which means they are not in the appropriate places currently. Even just doing, moving those stop signs is not going to change anything than what we currently have to do, which is we have to pull into that intersection further to see if there is traffic coming. So I really, if nothing else can be done besides whatever traffic calming issue designed you, you, the city decides to do, if anything, I'm sorry, if anything else can be done, please get that fence down. Get the, you have to keep the vegetation down there and along the guardrails on the other side. And that is going to be a city responsibility there in the right-of-way, and I really think the fence should come down. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. So counsel, what is important is that we move this forward. I mean, quite frankly, Sandra, boy, if you're anything, you're persistent. God bless you. Because, because there is a part of me that just wants to say, let's just put the stop signs up and be done with it. Because we've spent, I know, but Sandra, I'm not going to do that, and I'll tell you why. Because we had experts, we had first our city engineer, who is a trained engineer, a degreed engineer, certified engineer, say no stop signs. Then I think we did the right thing. We went to VHB and we said, okay, well, what do you think? We'd like a second opinion. You know, we, we want to, we want to give Sandra the respect of a second opinion. And they came back and said, no, stop sign. And they actually said, in some instances, when I asked a question, a stop sign could make the intersection much less unsafe. People might pull out thinking that that person is going to stop, and they're not going to stop. They're not used to it yet. And that really weighed on me because I'm thinking, okay, we could, we could make the situation even worse. And it's not a great situation now. And then we went back and we said, okay, let's look at some traffic calming measures. But we're always, you know, we're, so what I'm inclined to do is take the advice of experts. I'm not a, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a traffic expert, and, and I realize it may not be the popular route, but I think the most prudent route, when you've got experts telling you to do this, or do these number of things, I mean, you know, like Counselor Augustine, I'll consider, I'll consider a speed bump, okay? If you run it by the experts and say, is it a bad thing? And they say, no, it may not be an improvement, but it's not necessarily a bad thing, sure, I'll consider that. They've, they've said the stop sign, the four-way stop would not be recommended, it could make things much worse. That's the only reason I can't support that. I'll support anything else, quite frankly. I certainly support working with the neighborhood, and I'll support anything else. But I think at this point, we've got to, we've got to turn it back over to the city engineer and to the manager and let them deal with it. We're just, we're, we're kind of going around in circles, in my opinion. Counselor Augustine?
I would just ask that Sandra's question about the, whether or not that fence is in the right-of-way be resolved as we move forward. I, that's a question for GIS and, and mapping people. That's not something I have any expertise on, but I would just ask that it be resolved city-side before we go, before we go forward. And I would accept all the recommendations of the report and ask, ask the manager to move forward with them, was, as I had, I'm going to reiterate what I had said earlier, ask the manager and, and Brian to please check in with other communities about how median islands, which slow people down, are worked around in, in winter situations? If there are any ways that they do them that make them easier, anything like that? I would love this to be a place where we consider one, and I would also love for our Transportation Committee, which has started working again, to, to consider other areas that we've heard folks ask repeatedly for help around speeding in their neighborhoods. Specifically, we've had both Hill Street, I believe, Washington Street, and, no, not Washington Street, Hill Street, I'm sorry, and Merchant Street, named in past council meetings. But I'm sure that there are other areas where people are concerned as well. So I would love if our Transportation Committee could, could work on this in partnership with our city staff.
Yes.
My biggest concern is that we could say, yes, we're moving this forward without any plan for what we're going to move it forward to. And because of the fact that all through the city, just like Counselor Augustine just said, we have major speeding problems. And, I mean, down on Washington Street, somebody hit a house. I mean, okay, that's only one accident in the last year, but it was a little substantial. It caused some problems. And, you know, the fact that Sandra has petitioned so strongly, I think we somehow have to listen, come up, if we're going to come up with a solution, we're going to come up with a solution tonight. If we put rubber speed bumps down, it sounds like they have to come up in the wintertime. Did I hear that correctly?
I think that's one of the benefits of them.
Right, but then that doesn't solve the winter speeding problem. And, and, and it's, it's a problem. I do think that those median things work. And, yeah, they're, they cost money, but if we're going to keep our community safe, we're going to have to do something that is a clear answer so that this isn't a perpetual problem. And as Ben pointed out in the Front Porch Forum many times, if Prospect Heights goes through, you, you've still got a problem, only it's a little bigger. And so I don't want to make a decision tonight to, as much as I do want to support Brian and everybody who's worked so hard on this from inside the city, I don't want to sabotage then, but I don't think we're at an answer point yet. I really don't.
Sandra?
Yes, just real quickly, just a reminder that in Jen's notes, she indicated that if we cannot keep the vegetation down to make it safer, that a stop sign could be put up, number one. Secondly, to make it more visible, that fence really needs to come down, in my opinion, and I've even gotten emails from people in the neighborhood I could share with you. The last thing is, as far as the island goes, if that is put in a spot similar to what's at the bottom of Berlin Street on Main Street, that seems to slow the traffic there. That made that intersection easier to get out of because we often have to get out of there as well, go to the Barry Montclair Road, for instance. The island there has made that better for those of us that are trying to get across that intersection. So an island may actually work, and there may, with that intersection as big as it is, there may be plenty of room to put that island in there, and that would be something I would suggest looking into. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stockwell?
I agree with Counselor Shambel, that it would be nice to have a little more information to think about a little bit more. But the other thing I would like is like, what is short-term and what is long-term? And how affordable is this? The recommendations sound fine if they would work. I think an island could work, as Sandra points out, but are, is short-term six months and long-term a year? And do we know about affordability?
So counsel, I'm sorry, Counselor Augustine?
I would just speak to, the report does delineate between short and long-term solutions. The report suggests that short-term solutions are the new striping, which the manager has told us can start in May. So that answers, because I have other questions about timing and cost as well, but we know the answer to the short-term question. It's delineated in the report as striping that can start in May. A long-term recommendation, there are three long-term recommendations. One is making more substantial changes to that intersection that involve redoing parts of the concrete, excuse me, the, the road itself, to tighten the intersection, to slow the intersection down. That's on page 92 of the packet. So that's considered a long-term, and I would be interested in hearing from the manager on what the, we may not know exact projected cost, but like a general sense of that. And then the two other long-term suggested solutions are adding a speed bump, which I'm fully in favor of, as I've said previously, and adding a median island, which I would also love, but I understand that, that we need to resolve more questions around how other communities deal with them in the snow. So as I understand it, the recommendations from the report are the short and long-term solutions there, and the manager has said that all of them, except potentially that median strip, he could see working with what, what he has had his discussions with Public Works. And if I'm manager, if I have misstated any of that, please correct or.
No, I think that's mostly right, Counselor Augustine. The only thing is, I believe that the concrete shaving back could happen a little bit faster because there's some work planned in that area. So in terms of, you know, not just having the striping, but actually taking, carving out the, the road could, could be a, you know, closer to the short-term timeframe. You know, an island has to be planned, designed, we have to see if, we have to expand the road to get the, you know, the, the width to be able to build the island and have the, the lanes have the right width. So, you know, that's why it's longer term, right? Like that's, I, I don't know if we could tell you a cost, I, I can't tell you a cost today, but that's why I think it's, it's longer cost, longer term in the report anyway. But yeah, I just, I think the only clarification would be that the, the shaving of the concrete, of the, of the road itself could happen a little bit faster.
So if I'm hearing correctly, Counselor Augustine, what you're proposing is to move forward with the short and long-term recommendations contained in the VHB memorandum?
That's what I would like to do tonight, but what I was speaking up, just to clarify, to do is, is speaking to Counselors Shambel and Stockwell, who had expressed some concerns that we, we didn't necessarily have a clear course of action, and I was simply reflecting that in the report from VHB, what I saw were those suggested short and long-term actions. So that's, I see that as recommended by VHB as a, as a clear set of recommendations and a path forward, and I understand the manager's concerns about doing more work on figuring out a median island, but would be strongly in favor of it moving forward in some way.
Okay. Well, at least it moves us forward. So is that presented in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Thank you very much. Is there discussion?
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I would, in terms of the long range, I would like to see timelines put on this so that if we say, well, we can't put a, a speed bump on until May, that, you know, okay, get it on there. But in terms of the island, if we're going to be pursuing the idea of an island, I would like us to, you know, start getting that information fairly quickly because, because I think this is a good example of what's going on in the rest of the city. We have a problem. And, and if we, you know, drag our feet too much, it's, it just keeps the problem moving, period, literally.
So still searching for a path forward, Counselor Augustine?
I would just add, the motion tonight resolves the immediate question of that intersection, but I would just echo Counselor Shambel, and I've said since the beginning of this conversation, this is a citywide problem around speeding and around unsafe driving, and that we need to pursue more active measures to doing that. I would love for the Transportation Committee to take this up, to examine other areas where residents have come forward and expressed concerns. So I'm, I'm not making this part of my motion, just to be clear, I'm using discussion to ask that that, that that happen going forward, that, that, and perhaps in, you know, as Counselor Shambel, I, I agree with it, it would be nice to have a sort of point in the future that we can point to as an update on this and ask for progress. So I would ask the manager, does like four to six months sound reasonable for having conversations, figuring out what these things might look like, and perhaps having conversations with the Transportation Committee and residents in other areas about what other locations might look like?
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, I think that's reasonable. You know, we'll have to, if it's for other locations, I think we'll have to see what the conditions are on the ground. I would remind everyone, we, I think most people on the council received an email from someone who requested a stop sign both at Hill and Camp and at Nelson and Camp, and Nelson and Hill, right? And so those are the, I think we just have to be cognizant that, you know, some of those things just don't, don't make sense, right? And so we can't have, you know, you have your armchair quarterbacks, right, in football? You can't have your armchair traffic engineers telling the city what to do if it literally does not make sense, right? So we have to, you know, I just want to be clear about that, right? That, that what I think might be the solution in my neighborhood may not be appropriate. And I think that this report sort of showed that, right? That, that we, the instinct may have been that this was a simple solution, but the engineering showed time and again that, as sensical as it may have sound, sounded, it just wasn't the right thing to do from a traffic engineering perspective. So I just, also cognizant of costs, you know, we'd love to do all these things, you know, just talking to Brian back and forth, you know, don't have the exact estimate on a, on an island, but he estimates between $15,000, $15,000, $100,000. You have to engineer them, you have to plan them, you have to perhaps expand pavement. And so those things are not cheap, right? And then do we contract it, or do we use our crews? Does that mean our crews don't do street sweeping, right? So I just want to be very upfront about that, that we can certainly do updates on this. Our capacity to do more than a handful of projects at a time, at a year, in a construction season. season is probably low. We don't have a long construction season here. We have a lot of, you know, maintenance issues that have racked up that we've tried to prioritize. And so we'll just have to make really, it may mean that we do less paving, right, as an example, right? Because the crews that do the prepping for the paving may have to build an island, right? So we can certainly do it. I just don't want to, I just want to be very clear that the capacity to do them may not be as great as it may appear. And I think we should defer to traffic engineers to guide the way, right? Because this, I think this is a really good example of something that sounded like a no brainer, that somebody who has a degree in this told us is really not a good thing to do, right? So, but I'm, we're happy to give an update. I think the Transportation Committee had its last meeting canceled due to sickness, but I'm sure they'll, we're happy to take their, their advice and feedback on the places we can maybe prioritize.
Yeah, and I would just respond to that totally. Hearing and understanding and cognizant of all the many limitations in the situation, but I think we can work toward a better process that starts to address some concerns and arrives at like safe, sound solutions for the neighborhoods. I'm not, it's not going to be the same solution for every neighborhood, it's not going to be the same solution for every situation. But I think this has been a good start to that conversation that I would like to see repeated in other areas, and I would like to see us at least moving forward. I understand that it may not be at the, no pun intended, speed at which everyone wants it to be, but I would like us to see us move forward, and I would propose a four to six month timeline.
I think that's reasonable. So why don't we, why don't we move forward based on the motion that's been presented? Yes?
Yeah, my concern is that we'll have another flood and it will be put aside and the intersection never actually gets improved. And there are other things in the cities and stuff will happen, but with a four to six month timeline, I feel like at least we can come back and revisit the issue and see where we are. So that seems good to me.
I think that seems, I mean, I can't sit here and offer Sandra assurances that there won't be a flood this year. I can't offer any assurances that there won't be a nuclear war, that things won't change, but Sandra will do our level best. I mean, you have our commitment in terms of the project, but I, but in terms of, I think four to six months seems to be a reasonable timeframe. Is everybody, everyone seems to be okay with that? I think the manager certainly understands that if something goes sideways, I think our manager is smart enough to let the council know that we, either our timeframe is improved or it slipped a little bit. So if there's no other discussion, council, all those in favor of the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much. Motion carries. Counsel, we'll move on to item 8H on the agenda. This is Counselor resignation procedures. I believe it was Counselor Spalding who asked that the resignation procedures be clarified. We don't really have a policy, we don't really have procedures, because counselors are elected by their constituents. They're not elected by the city council. Therefore, we don't prescribe on any level how someone should resign, other than to remind people, you know, resign the way you'd want someone else to resign from a board that you sit on. So basically, in this particular case, counselors submitted their resignation, it had a certain effective date. The resignation was not accepted by the council, voted on by the council. Even if it had been voted on by the council, it had a certain effective date. And the resignation was subsequently withdrawn prior to the effective date, and a new resignation was submitted. So basically, as council, we simply follow Robert's Rules of Order. Winnick, yes?
So I have a couple of concerns with the, this memo, agenda item number 8H. First of all, the idea that there's no procedures for resigning from Berry City Council, I understand that doesn't exist. The latest edition of Robert's Rules of Order shall govern the deliberations of the council, but I don't think resigning from an elected position is necessarily falling under the umbrella of governing the deliberations. And then furthermore, in the paragraph where it says, although the assembly can by a vote reject a resignation of the individual appointing authority can reject, or the individual appointing authority can reject a resignation, it serves no practical purpose in a volunteer organization. And as you just stated, Mayor, we are not a volunteer organization, we are elected officials. What I'm simply asking for is to clear up the poor communication that existed with the resignation of the counselor. None of us on city council knew that he had resigned, with the exception of he was presented with a proclamation, and none of us got a copy of the resignation, none of us got a copy of the rescinding of the resignation. There was no procedures, there was no notification to the council. And even this memo indicates that a counselor who resigns should provide written notice of their intentions to the mayor, clerk, and city manager. So when you provide written notice, I'm assuming that if we are going to follow that, providing written notice, Counselor Wazza's Act provided written notice that he wanted to resign, and then after the deadline, he rescinded that resignation. So written notice. So, well, yes, that's exactly what happened.
But that's not what happened. I was here. We can replay the meeting.
Yes, I watched it, and it was not abundantly clear to me that he had resigned. So if I say right now, that's it, I'm resigning, does that count? Or do I have to write it down?
No.
Because this, because you're saying that it, but that's my point. We need a, we need a procedure. We need people. If you need to resign before the end of your term, you need to provide written notice of your intention. And notification should be given to the entire city council.
That would be the prefer, that would be the preferred course of action. It is not a course of action that we have the right to force on anyone. We don't elect them. They're elected by the constituents, period.
Should we ask the constituents what they would like to do?
Yes.
Okay, so can we put this on a ballot, asking what we should do for?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Present it.
Okay, I will.
And we can do that, but you're insisting that, first of all, we have a difference of opinion in terms of what happened.
Yes.
I was not provided with a copy of Counselor Wazza's Act's resignation, nor were you. I'm not aware that one existed. Must have. Counselor Wazza's Act's resignation was effective at midnight after the council meeting. Prior to the adjournment of the council meeting, he clearly withdrew his resignation. I heard it?
Nope.
Okay. Okay. Then we'll, then we'll disagree. It is preferable if people put things in writing. They don't always. So I agree that in terms of policy, as I just said, resign the way you would want someone else to resign from a body. Put it in writing, but what you need to understand and accept is that if someone puts their resignation, even if it is accepted, if someone says, I resign two weeks from tonight, and then they subsequently withdraw, even after the council accepts the resignation, they withdraw the resignation prior to the effective date, they have the right to do that. That is valid. Yes.
I support putting it on the ballot so people have a choice.
But I don't even understand what we'd put on the ballot.
Hold on, may I finish, please? Sure. Thank you. But, you know, right now, I was at the same meeting, and I saw it differently than you saw it, and somewhat differently from the way you saw it. The way I saw it is, it was announced at the beginning that this was his last meeting. So we all thought it was his last meeting. And after the meeting adjourned, I overheard him saying, not to the group as a whole, but overheard him saying, oh, I better withdraw my resignation. Now, the fact that three of us now have heard three or seen three different things says we need to clarify it so there's consistency. That's all I want to see.
Counselor Guston?
I would submit that the question of what happened in the past, in the past, except that it has led us to the point where we are seeking clarification on the exact procedure for going forward. In the memo, I think there's a very succinct description, starting from the second to last, about midway through the second to last paragraph, the legal advice states, a counselor who resigns before the end of their term, and that's how that sentence starts. And from there to the end of that memo, it describes a process per, what the legal council has looked at as being in agreement with Robert's rules, which is they have suggested do discuss resignations. It's in agreement with the existing charter, which describes a resignation as a valid way to end of term of office. And it describes an understood path. What the best way to codify this path is, I don't know. If, if there is a sense from other counselors that it should be before the voters, and that suggests to me a charter change around putting this language clearly. There may be other ways in which something like this can be adopted for a shared understanding of the way to go forward. But I would suggest that there is succinct language within this memo that describes, I think, a clear and shared understanding of the path that is in alignment with charter, because charter does already talk about resignation, so there is, it understands that there's a situation which, I'm sure it's happened before in Berry City history, I haven't had time to look it up, but, other than the most recent example, but that there is a, it's already an imagined situation, and this language, I think, suggests a clear path to get us there. What I don't know is the best way to codify that so that there's a shared understanding amongst serving counselors, both current and future.
Counselor Stockwell?
Mr. Manager, could you get people into the waiting room? In from the waiting room, please.
I like the way this is ordered. I agree with Counselor Guston, and I think that perhaps it could become a policy. It's really asking for people's, for people to be as good as they were. And it just, it just puts in a procedure that's clear, makes it come before council. I think it's very clear and it could work. And we could try it as policy and see what happens.
Lisa Liotta?
Thank you. I'm just wondering if council or the manager has reached out to the Secretary of State's office for advice on this, because we all know charters can be inaccurate and attorneys may misunderstand things, but the Secretary of State seems like the body of authority that could best advise how to do this. Because certainly this has happened in other municipalities many times over, and that, to me, would be the place to look. And I don't know if that's been done, but that would be a good place to start. Thank you.
Thank you. So if you would like to put something on the ballot, Counselor, that I'm fine with that. But, you know, you have to accept, the preference is always, so I'm struggling, and you may think I'm picking on you, I'm struggling, what would you put on the ballot? That a resignation must be in writing. So if you jumped up, said, I quit, and left the room, and never came back, we couldn't consider that a resignation because it wouldn't be in writing. So we would have to leave your seat vacant for the rest of your term. And you said, well, I'm not, the heck with them, I'm not providing a resignation in writing, and we couldn't say, well, all right, there was clear intent, this is what she said, this is what she did. And, you know, I think you'd lose that argument. Just like I think you'd lose the argument if a counselor put their resignation in writing dated December 31st, and then on December 30th, at a regular meeting of the city council, clearly withdrew that resignation. I don't think you could stop them from doing it. And I have sought a legal opinion on that, and you can't. And the main reason is, we're the Berry City Council, we didn't elect them. That's why we have voters. So someone would be loath to say, well, the city council can enact policy to prevent that counselor from participating in a meeting when that counselor was elected by voters. I, I just am struggling with why we're even spending time on this. Ellen Kay?
Well, I think we're spending time on this because it, it needs to be transparent, whether it's something that gets codified into a charter or it doesn't. It needs to be a transparent process. This was clearly not transparent. People were confused as to whether Counselor Wazza's Act was still on the council, had resigned, had rescinded, it was done, not in front of the public. And in fact, several counselors were not even clear on what had happened because it was not done out loud in a transparent way. City council needs to be transparent to us, the voters, the residents. That's the problem here that needs to be solved, however it gets solved, even if it's just good process that is out loud in front of the public.
Thank you. Yes?
So I liked the suggestion that we contact the Secretary of State's office, and I'd be happy to do that, but does that, or would the manager be able to do that?
Sure.
I mean, I can do it, or you can do it.
I can do it.
I just feel like we should get some other, for me, the biggest issue is, this isn't Robert's rules, this isn't the city of Berry. This is an elected official who resigned from a seat and then withdrew the resignation. And we sat here and celebrated Counselor Wazza's Act's term, many terms, and tenure as a city counselor, and then he showed up again. That's confusing to the, his constituents. That's confusing to a lot of people. So I think if we could just be very clear about what it means to resign, and how, what that process looks like, and how we formally acknowledge it, and then what happens if someone decides to change their mind? I think that's what I would just like some clarification on.
Yes.
Well, I think that's true, and you're right. Anyone may violate any policy, but we're just, we're just setting something in writing that's as guidance. And that seems to me well worth doing, so we're saying, here's the policy. If you want more of that, or I think this is well written, it's clear, it has steps, you're right, anyone could walk out at any time. That could happen. But most people are honorable and they take their work seriously, so I think this is a good start at having, here's what you do and here's how you do it.
So you were referring to this, when you said it's clear and?
Yes.
Okay. But this is what Counselor Spalding said she didn't agree with?
And, yes, and she may want more information, so that's a possibility, and there's.
So we want the Secretary of State to look specifically at this?
I think that's not a bad idea.
Okay. And just, hey, is this, you know, and not putting words in your mouth, Counselor Spalding, but I thought you said, I don't agree with this.
I don't agree with this memo as it is written because it basically says, there's no recommended action. It is suggesting that we have no control over people, and we're under the, there's no provisions, there's no statute, there's no case, there's no ordinance, there's no procedure that describes the procedures for resigning from Berry City Council. You're suggesting that if you resign, it should be provided in a written notice, but we can't actually hold people to that. So my question is, if we ask the Secretary of State's office, what does it mean when someone, as an elected official to a municipal body, what happens when they say, I resign? What happens? What does that mean? What does that look like?
Ask the right question. What happens when they say, I resign as of December 31st, as opposed to, I resign effective immediately? When they communicate, when someone simply says, I resign, I think any reasonable person would take that to mean, I resign immediately. When they resign, when they say, I resign immediately, well, okay, that's pretty clear too. When they say, I resign effective 12:00 PM or 11:59 PM on December 31st, 2004, I think that's pretty clear too. The important question is, do they have the right to withdraw that resignation prior to the effective date? And I think that's the question that was answered, and the answer is yes.
But I just, that's the part I disagree.
Because they weren't elected by the Berry City Council. They were elected by their constituents.
Which is why we should contact the Secretary of State.
We'll do that. And, but we'll ask that question, because that seems to be the important question in everyone's mind. Is that correct? Or no?
Well, if someone resigns, and then they retract their resignation, and they, what is the process for doing that? That's my question. We have no process. By simply saying, I could say, I resign immediately, or I resign at nine o'clock, and then I say, oh, but now... and then I say, "Oh, but now I'm going to retract it and I'm not actually going to resign." But that, that's my point. It's, we need to, to make it clear so that we can say, we can have very clear procedures as to what does it mean when someone, as an elected official, resigns? I don't think you should be able to retract it, quite honestly. I mean, if you're an elected official and you're resigning, you resigned. You're supposed to be filled through an appointment. That's very clear in charter.
If you have an affected, effective resignation date, I will confirm this for you. My understanding is that if you have an effective resignation date and then you withdraw your resignation prior to that effective date, your resignation is withdrawn. So maybe you don't think that people should be able to do that. But that's just, that's just the way it works. Yes?
So, so we're going to check that out with the Secretary of State. And so.
We get to talk about this again.
So lawfully withdrawn is just a sentence that perhaps needs more explanation? Like a lawful, what is lawfully withdrawn? Is that written or is that just someone says, "Okay"?
And that's the thing I think we don't know and we want some confirmation from the Secretary of State. And Counselor Deering has just handed it in.
Understood. Counselor Deering? So just to summarize this memo, the point of no return becomes after you are effectively resigned. So if you say that I'm going to resign at 11:59 tonight and at 11:58, I decide that I'm going to rescind my resignation, then you are duly able to do that because you're appointed. So until, my, my understanding is that until you've crossed that line of your resignation, you are still appointed and elected until you've resigned and officially given that up. Whether we want to allow individuals to have a second crack at their resignation or things of that nature, to me, I believe that's their right as an elected official, that until they decide that that's when they're done, they can pull it back at any point in time. I mean, that's my reading of, of this. Yeah, I'm going to go to Counselor Augustin. Then I'm going to go to Counselor Jean Bell.
I would just submit that we do actually have current procedures for resignation because charter specifies Robert's Rules of Orders will govern. It's just that they're not clear and, and they are not specific to our situation. They are general to, as was discussed in here, the request to be excused from a duty. They're, they are a little too amorphous for what we feel should be a more specific description of process in the situation. So we do have a current procedure. We just don't think it's specific enough. And what I have heard from other counselors tonight, and the reason we're sort of having this discussion is that folks would like it to be more specific and would like it to be codified so that there is a good, shared understanding. I, I think that it is a normal part of a council or any elected body's way of governing, way of operating, to have people resign and to accept those resignations. Unless those resignations are effective, there's a procedure to be replaced. We already have the procedure to replace and the description in charter that a resignation is a valid way to end someone's term in office. So I don't think it's, Mayor, and perhaps I was misunderstanding, but you suggested that, that ultimately the voters are the, are the people who would have determination over someone's resignation. But I would, I would think that they, they can resign. And I would personally be comfortable with requesting it or requiring it in writing. I mean, some jobs say you can't quit a job until you, like, I've had to submit letters of resignation from, from paid job positions in the past. And that's just the policy for that particular situation. And some places have accepted me verbally saying, "This is my last date." But I think for clarity and purposes, what I've described is I'd, I'd split off that second to last paragraph and start with the sentence, "A counselor who resigns before the end of their term" through to the end of the memo, I think, is a reasonable policy. Again, I still don't know what the best place to codify it is. Counselor Stockwell has suggested just making it a policy. Others have suggested putting it on the ballot, which again, to me, suggests it be codified in charter somehow. I don't know what the best place to do it is, but that, to me, seems like a reasonable policy. I'm fine with checking on this with the Secretary of State. I think that's probably a smart path. But I think we effectively have a suggested policy. And if council feels, or counselors feel comfortable with just being really clear and specific about this, that is, there's a good path there.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, we will move on to upcoming business. Anyone? Okay, thank you. Roundtable, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was a little curious. I was thinking about public safety and how important that is. And I was looking back and I saw that we did use, that Berry City did have an aggressive panhandling ordinance. And the city was then sued by ACLU. So I think if we do the same things, we would have the same results. But it does seem to me like looking at other ways we can make the city a safe place is an important thing to think about at some future council meetings.
We have, we had an aggressive, or we had a, no.
Panhandling, it was 2017.
We had an ordinance that was specifically against panhandling. An ordinance that bars panhandling, for example, in a public, in a public parking lot is not constitutional. An, an ordinance that, in the interest of public safety, bars aggressive panhandling, and I think we all know what that is, has been deemed to be constitutional. So we had, at one time, the city of Berry had a very broad, matter of fact, I think it's still on the books. It was a very broad ordinance that simply said, "You cannot panhandle anywhere in the city. You cannot solicit anywhere."
I think actually it was rescinded in 2020, but I could be wrong about the date.
In 2020?
Yeah, I think it's off the books.
Wouldn't, wouldn't there, yeah, wouldn't there then? So, but I don't think these specifically, I don't think the city has specifically had an ordinance. I mean, there are some ordinances that I would like to at least have the opportunity to look at. One of them is an aggressive panhandling ordinance. I think that people have a right to feel safe in the city. And I think that even though some, there are some people who have said, "It won't do anything. People won't follow it." I don't know about that. And if there are one or two people who say, "Oh, okay, I'm not supposed to panhandle within 50 feet of an ATM. I'm, I'm not going to do that." And if that keeps a few people from feeling unsafe or uncomfortable and the price is the cost of an ordinance, I think that's kind of worth it. You know, I think the speeding thing, I think we need to look at different areas of the city and perhaps look at areas where, where people are, you know, are speeding. And another ordinance that I'd like to have the city take a look at is something that they've done in St. Albans and something they had done at one time in Brattleboro, is look at an ordinance that basically if a landlord, if, if law enforcement authorities are called, if there's, if there's a nuisance property and they are called to a property multiple times because the landlords don't really care who they rent to and what kind of people they're renting to and what the effect that that has on a neighborhood. Maybe their landlord doesn't live here and they don't care. I'd like to take a look at something like that as well. You know, for me, it's just about simple accountability and decency. It's not about trying to turn, you know, and I think someone said it perfectly at the public safety meeting. You can, you can have empathy and still want something to be done and still feel scared. You know, you can have empathy for people but still want to feel safe. And I think we just, if we can just calm down and find that balance, I think we'll be better for it. Counselor Augustin?
Just two quick notes on upcoming business. We are flood resiliency plan updates in February. At our next meeting, we will hear about a recent grant funding that will fund neighborhood walks as well as flood education workshops, which were two different sections of the plan. And then later in February, we'll hear an update on where we are in finding a new DPW garage. So those are both upcoming business for me.
Thank you. Roundtable. Counselor Augustin, I'm going to pick on you and start with you. Surprise. You want me to, you want me to circle back?
No, I'm good. I'll pass. I don't have any.
Counselor Deering.
It's really a youth-first mentoring presentation tonight was very impactful for me. I knew nothing about them going into this. But I'm going to do what I can to see if I can't try to find them some money to do some stuff with. We have a huge community that needs help. And this looks like it's an organization that wants to help. So I'm going to do what I can to, to help them. And I hope that others in our community can join along.
Thank you. Counselor Jean Bell.
I pass. Thank you.
Counselor Spaulding?
I have two things. One, I appreciated Superintendent Canning and our Chair, Michael Booton, coming in to talk about the Berry Unified Union School District budget. I would encourage everyone to get absentee ballots. Ask for them now. Don't let it get away from you. Vote early and have it be over with. And don't have to worry about if something comes up, if you're sick, if you're not able to get there, if you're not able to get out of work. So request the absentee ballots now and make sure you vote. The only thing on the ballot in March for town meeting date is the BUUSD budget and school board positions. The other thing I wanted to say, and this is probably a bit difficult, but I wanted to say thank you for the community members who brought to our attention our open meeting law violations. It's really hard to admit when you've done something wrong. And I appreciate that there are people who are engaged, that there are people who are paying attention. There are people who are trying to make sure that we are being as transparent as possible. And it never feels good to say, "Hey, we messed up and we need to do better." But I appreciate that it was brought to our attention. And I hope that we can continue to observe all of the requirements of open meeting law as we move forward. So thank you. That's all.
Counselor Stockwell.
I'll pass.
Okay, thank you. Once again, I just wanted to thank Tess Taylor. And I realize it's a teen, but Tess was kind of leading the charge. So we, we helped four people. And I guess my comment on that, there were folks who were like, "Boy, that was a lot of trouble to go through, you know, four." And it was almost a little bit of disappointment that we thought there were more people we could help. But the way I feel about that, I feel about that the same way I feel about the aggressive panhandling ordinance. I'll take it. I'll take helping four people any day of the week. There were four people who weren't at risk. There were four people who were a little bit more comfortable. You know, we learned something. And so even afterwards, as we debriefed, we talked about, okay, well, maybe there's a smaller space where we can be even more nimble and pick it up even more quickly. So everything is a learning experience. And to everyone from Nicholas to the folks in public safety, the folks at the state, the folks at the Red Cross and Tess, thank you for helping. And lastly, thank you to Governor Scott. City of Berry was in his budget. Our Prospect Heights development project was in the governor's budget, which he unveiled today for a $1 million appropriation. I realize that puts us a long way from the finish line because, you know, the governor still has to negotiate his budget with the, with the legislature. But I certainly appreciate the governor thinking of us. I'm honored that he, he thought of us. And, you know, we'll do our best in the legislature. We'll be testifying and we'll do our best to make sure that this $1 million appropriation survives because realistically, it all but assures the success of the Prospect Heights project. So with that, counsel, we, I do need, I believe the manager needs, we need an executive session. Actually, we'll have, we'll be discussing a few topics that they will all be along the lines of personnel and legal.
And one labor update.
Oh, and one labor, sorry, thank you. And one labor update. So motion for findings would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And those opposed? And a motion to go into executive session. The manager, excuse me, will be joining us. Need a motion?
She moved. I'll second.
Oh, okay. Moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Thank you very much.
And no action, Dave?
We don't anticipate any action. And you got my 12 cents.
I got your 12 cents. So I'm going to put it right on her desk, just like that.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session, please.
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Dearing, seconded by Counselor Sean Bell. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn would be in order, made by Counsel Dearing, seconded by Counselor Sean Bell. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.